I was like, wait a minute.
Good to know.
Yeah. Hey.
How are you doing? I hadn't seen you since.
Didn't think I'd have to be up there today. What's going on?
How are you? Mayor saw knowledge is ported everywhere.
Well, that was one of my things. I was scared that I wouldn't be able to record. I was like, find out how it works. I remember.
That's good.
Testing one.
I spoke to you and you never said anything. I said, good evening, Mr. Eads.
I was following him, I think.
I think so, maybe.
Because, you know, if he's not here.
Make sure we have the batteries.
If he's not here in, we don't have the clerk, I have to be able to do that.
Oh, did.
Oh.
Here, Greg. Did you see what we have to do?
Well, find the batteries. I mean, I think you go to that process.
He misses me a lot. Maybe we need to get somebody to be here all the time.
The clerk?
Do you want to check his mic? No, make sure we get batteries.
Testing.
Good evening.
Hello.
How come so people tonight?
Oh, yes.
In regard for we get out of here.
I missed the last meeting because my stepmom was in the hospital. Then my dad got put in the hospital. And 10 minutes ago, I get a call from my stepmom.
Testing.
She needs to go to the emergency room immediately because her blood sodium levels are too low. And he said she's at risk of having a seizure.
Maybe your daughter was in the homecoming bit.
No, no. Well, she was supposed to get released. And it was, she had a problem with her kidneys that they think was related to switching a medication. And then she got dehydrated. So she was home and doing great. And I took them to the doctor on Monday, to Wednesday, yesterday. And he just got the blood results back. And he thought they made a mistake in the lab. So he had them run them again. And, you know, my dad can't stay by himself right now. He just got over pneumonia. And I can't, this is not a meeting.
She's low in vitamin D.
Well, she's got to get outside. Do what now?
Is she at the hospital now?
She's at the hospital now?
I reached out to their church, my brother, the neighbors. The neighbor said she's going to take her. The doctor said they would admit her. So I'll just have to go there when we get done here. They're over in Springfield.
Oh, is it Springfield?
Yes.
Oh, is that Spreaker Regional?
Well, they live in Springfield. Yeah.
Is it the main one or the, they got two of the vet? Something else, a valley something, then a.
Yeah.
Then the main hospital.
The main one, not the surgical center.
It's hard. My sister, my daughter went through several, it's hard to get it down.
I don't know, it's pretty nice right now, yeah. But dang it, that is not what I had on my, my to-do list for tonight. But I don't, this is a pretty important meeting. And I missed the last one, like, really?
Look at these ones, too.
I need you to.
Give you new ones these days.
Dang it.
These concessions they made when we went to the commission.
Oh, okay.
And then, that's what the first one looked like. And that's what changes made looks like. This one cuts down to 245.
So these are.
New ones they just gave us tonight.
That Paul is going to do, they're already.
Yes, the mayor has voted on this thing tonight. But I like this one, 245.
So is that the current?
I'm not sure how that's going to work.
The neighbor is taking Pat to the emergency room. Hello. Thank you. Okay.
You're fine.
Oh, my gosh. All right, let me see this.
I didn't turn it. Got the microphone, you want me to go down and do that right now?
Um. We got what? I won't waste the battery.
I get that.
When we get close to 6:30, I'll turn. I go down and grab that.
Oh, that, that. Called it. Don't even look like you used to call them that a lot. She's been in a red shirt over there.
Maybe.
Sure as hell it's all the way to that instead of running up this.
Am I right?
Yeah.
So they come out and check his.
Lights didn't hide there. Great, but I pushed it back and put it out so we could see it tonight. I hope it didn't hide you. He's up here tonight anyway.
Nobody needs to see my mug. I had it for you.
Now, before we watch, can you still that light? So I could, I walked it away, somebody else.
Yeah.
Kathy's like, where's my end of it? I was like, crap. Thank you. Sorry, my brain is.
So I don't, I was saying, when I walked again. That's why I wanted to do this. In my, in my mind, I'm free.
Wonder if there's some depth.
That could make me speak. So first.
They're like, you're arguing. Wonder why they didn't hook into the other.
They had a good one.
I guess the planning commission didn't want to do that.
And honestly.
Are they up too?
Yeah, they just just now, like literally 10 minutes.
I think we were talking earlier, Mike, are they still up?
Oh, the neighbors didn't want it. So he modified it based on the neighbor's feedback.
I mean, I like baseball, but I quit being.
I think that would have been an excellent idea because anyone going south or west would have to go on the high street. Well, I think it was the Sheriff Avenue neighbors that didn't want.
Yeah, Reds lost last night.
The exit there.
That's part of the same as them.
Yeah.
No, actually, the Reds got, they scored the other. And they didn't score anything.
Uh, did you get what you needed?
Oh.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I was thinking about that.
No, okay.
So, um. Oh, that's 271.
Oh, yeah, I know.
We'll have another weekend.
Oh, my gosh.
Hey, Mr. Hitt, how you doing, buddy?
Good, how are you?
Hanging in there. One day at a time.
So we can do.
Now, so you can get up, that issue's cool. We had one years ago, they weren't for leeches on cats. Say one.
Oh, yeah. I'd take that.
Oh, it's not really. I talked to her. I talked to everybody.
Maybe, yeah. I don't know.
I didn't know what she said.
I was tip.
Actually, we do need this. This one here. You know, being it was the electric supply, we did ask what we had these two.
Well, this is something new, I believe, that Shannon has.
Yeah, is that better?
Her brother's friend or whatever.
Is it, I wonder.
I don't know. We'll see what she has to say. Because she was still doing some research. I, I wasn't here last time, but I watched the video.
I watched the other movie too, and they didn't talk.
Otherwise, I'm just that one for you. I've had a record. I, yeah.
Just starting out.
Yeah. Oh, I think.
I don't think you can impact either one of you.
Mm-hmm. I, I had my power gone out.
He's here, he's here.
Down in Locking County. And I, I got a notification and I called up the commissioner net. And after my parents being in the hospital, it took me, we didn't have to go down. It's just my house, the power's out, a bunch of rotten meats and saucers. I called the electric company and they said it was not their issue, it was mine. So now I got an electrician coming. And I was on my way home from down there and my daughter called and said that she was driving home from practice and she tried to put the window down and the smoke started coming out of the buttons on the wall.
That'd be awful.
Yes, so, I mean, she pulled over and called me and like, I don't know what to tell her.
Yeah.
Drive home unless it catches fire.
Wow.
So I still haven't, hi. I still haven't had a chance to get to the bottom of it. Um, which one? In the second row is a kitchen. She's a real pole.
Okay, thank you.
She's a merge.
Yeah.
And the front row was JoJo Fow and Monica Fow.
See, there's something else that the board, you got to check too. Something too hard that you had up. Something I think that might have caused.
Well, boy bladder infections can mesh up.
Oh, and she's had.
Hey.
Yeah, hopefully there's going to be.
Well, it's something one party to make everything smaller stuff.
I think they've got a national.
It's like anything, it's like off the grid.
Who are we? I feel like we're missing somebody.
He's here.
No, everybody's here.
He turned on the mic, right?
Oh, Tom Coughlin.
He didn't mean it, he was upset with everybody else. So he's got a hole in his eye.
What? Who did?
Sorry. And, and this whole, I mean, I.
It's tough to say about my.
Wanting to get pre-clearance for.
He's not saying much about the election, but he's got his signs up. Not even a month for the election, like 40. I just put mine up for my house, but I was just looking for my signs up.
Well, there's.
I don't have any doubt that there's going to be any stone on. I worked for an entire week on Monday and Tuesday of this week. I'm just, oh, I'm happy.
Just.
Just come around.
So it's not here? So. I don't know how there can be too many traffic.
Life is busy for everyone.
Obviously, you, you already know. It's, I said, is that five miles wide? Because you can have, there's a center turnaround and Rose on the funny beside a big, you know, parking. Like, is that like something? Well, it's definitely got the center turnaround. Um, like, well, if there's a, there's a traffic problem, it's. It's not. It's more where, bigger than it's. Capacity. It's busy.
South Main?
Mm-hmm.
Where the pipe is.
No. I'm very excited.
Good evening.
How are you?
We're doing good. She's having a time.
Oh, my stepmom's doctor just called me and said that her blood test came back and her blood sodium level was off. And she needs to go to the emergency room immediately. Like, I can't resist. So I called everybody, I could beat up her neighbors. I'm like, I give up.
That sucks. Oh, no, where's my, oh.
It's all right.
There it is.
You use that too many times.
I think it's time for me to buy a new keyboard. Oh, no. No, oh.
Shannon, you good?
No, yeah. Let's get it over with.
You tell me when you're ready.
I'm ready.
I call the meeting to order, please. Um, everyone can please stand for the pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silent reflection.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the righteous saints, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll do roll call. Councilman Eads.
Here.
Councilman McDaniel's.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilman Hitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Here.
Councilman Stoll.
Present.
Councilwoman, uh, Jackman.
Here.
Did everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes? Any corrections, concerns? All right, here nine, all in favor, say. All in favor?
Aye.
Posting sign. Uh, we do have a, two public hearings tonight. Um, we'll start with, uh, resolution 180-25 and then we'll go on to, uh, resolution 181-25. So if I could get a motion to exit, um, regular council meeting, enter into public hearing.
I'll move that we, I'll move that we exit. Regular meeting, go to the public hearing. Second.
As everyone can see, we have a full house tonight. Um, we do have, looks like 32 people to speak tonight, so if, um. Oh, we need to vote on that. Okay. Councilman Eads.
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Yes.
Councilman Stoll.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman.
Yes.
Okay. Um, like I said, there's 32 people here to speak tonight. Um, everybody can say, say their piece, but we try not to have any, uh, back and forth. Once you come up, state your name and address for the record and make sure you're speaking into a microphone. So, uh, first up, we have Senator Michelle Reynolds. She. Okay.
Do you want to, do you want to do this during audience conference?
Yeah, this is for public hearing.
Oh, okay.
You can go to the next person if you'd like.
Let's move, yeah, we'll just go to the next one real quick. Uh, Burdette Willard.
Hello, my name is Burdette Willard. I live at 366 Victoria Drive, the Kensington condos. I'm kind of down and around the corner from this development. I have a few comments to make. Councilmen and ladies. I'm here to support the new Madison Reserve development off Highway 142. As I understand it, it will comprise about 250 to 270 homes, price starting around $220,000 and up. In my opinion, in today's market, this is a, our attainable starter homes for young worker families. This will add to the tax base to support city services and the school system. I just live about a mile away and this is on my routine daily activity route. And I think the development would fit in well with the existing homes along that street. Now, I've lived here for 15 years and been happy with the experience overall. But I've seen some downtown businesses struggle and I've seen some restaurants come and go. So I think that 250 to 270 new families could help stabilize the local business community. And I think the city of London should encourage sustainable growth and not get left behind by the surrounding communities. This is a economic boom in central Ohio. It's probably one time only for the next few years. For these reasons, I strongly support the Madison Reserve developments and encourage you to do so also. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Up next, we have Tara Schumaker.
Hi, my name is Tara Schumaker and I live at 257 Washington Avenue. I keep getting nervous while I do this, so I'm going to read this time instead of just doing it off the cuff. I'm going to try and least and let the members of this committee know that we don't want this to happen in its present state. Mr. Gross was generous to have a meeting to discuss our concerns. He called me personally to let me know he added sidewalks and some deed restrictions about house height. He added a walking path along the railroad. He also changed how the people living there will enter and exit their homes. I know how he benefits. I know how the city benefits, but do we as citizens of London benefit? I don't think so. The people in my neighborhood will lose the sunrise. This will affect our well-being. I've blown up some of the pictures and brought them with you to the council in a couple of meetings. I've also been told that the loss of sunshine adversely affects the roof conditions of homes. We are all aware that it couldn't continue to be a field forever. Change is not the issue. Density is the issue. Traffic is the issue. Safety is the issue. 271 housing units on 55 acres. Wow, how's that propensity? I understand that the houses will average 1,200 square feet on less land than my house, which is only 972 square feet, and that counts the garage. Doesn't affordable housing deserve some kind of green space? Recent studies have found being ma, being in nature results in better health. I found a study about how a built environment can affect both physical and mental health. Lack of recreation areas discourages physical activities and could lead to obesity. Lack, uh, rising concerns about living so close together may result in crime concerns. And that might make you afraid to go outside. And this could return us to isolation, and we know how well that went during COVID. Well, people want to live that close together next to the railroad. There are many disadvantages to PUDs. HOA fees could be pricey and rules could be respect, respective, restrictive. What if disputes arise between residents that could result in declining property values? Increased density results in less privacy and could lead to more noise and congestion. The original character of the neighborhood would dramatically change. This density would disrupt the ecosystem, remove green space, and increase popu, pollution. I understand that a study is being done about how many more cars will affect the roads. 271 housing units could potentially result in 542 more cars using 142. Again, there's more noise and congestion. This will result in significant inconvenience for residents, old and new. The plans also show two retention ponds as planned to control water runoff. Retention ponds have unique risks. They usually have steep walls, making it difficult to climb out of if you happen to fall in. During heavy rains, even strong currents form. They pose a danger, danger to people. You could be pinned against a fence or swept away. According to the CDC, drowning is the second leading cause of death for children ages 1 through 14. We should discuss the dangers of these areas and the importance of warning posting. Setting everything aside, can London's infrastructure handle this project with all the other housing units? London continues to grow and places its emphasis on new. How about helping out old London? I understand this takes a lot of money and all these housing projects will result in more money. But couldn't we just slow down and really think and plan about how this affects all of us, new and old? My family and others love living in a small town. It, will it continue to be a small town? We all deserve to be respected and loved. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Up next, Lou Kramer.
Well, hello, everyone. Thanks for allowing me some time to speak. My name is Lou Kramer and for, over the last decade, I've had the immense pleasure to be the superintendent of London City Schools. Recently, uh, actually, over the last couple of years, as we've watched our community, uh, grow, I've had, uh, the opportunity to field a lot of questions about how that growth affects our school district. And, uh, within the last, uh, say, two weeks, I had the opportunity to speak at the commissioners', uh, meeting on this very topic. And, uh, as a school district, we're also going through, uh, our own strategic planning, uh, to look at what we are doing as a school district to increase the opportunities and student achievement for our students, but also to deal with our changing community as well. I'd like to thank Mayor Klosser for being a part of that. President Peters, thank you for also attending one of our focus groups as well. Both of you had some firsthand, uh, information regarding the enrollment projections for our school district. You know, when I have these conversations and I get the question about how growth is going to affect our school district, people are surprised to know that this year, we're actually down in enrollment. By my dashboard this week, we're down 49 students. Up in preschool, we've, we've invested a lot of, uh, resources in expanding those opportunities for our students. But actually, at each of our schools, the elementary, middle school, and high school, uh, this year, we are down. Overall, in my time at London, I've been able to see, we've a net effect of being up a little over 200 students. But most of that is because we're doing a better job as a school district retaining students to stay in London uh, and attracting students when it's, uh, opportunists for us, uh, from other school districts, uh, through open enrollment. Some of that, uh, enrollment over the last 10 years, 200 plus, has been from growth. So from a capacity standpoint, we monitor our enrollment, uh, very regularly. From a school district funding standpoint, slow, steady, sustainable growth is optimal for school districts. That's what we'd like to see overall. And so from a capacity standpoint, we keep a pretty close eye on things. But right now, we are projecting that we are in really good shape from a, from a school district standpoint, especially in the next, uh, term for the next, uh, five years or so. So I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to speak a little bit. Uh, the one last thing that I'll share is, um, over my time in London, it has been increasingly, uh, better to attract and retain staff members to the school district. Having an opportunity to have some diverse housing options for our early career teachers would be a significant benefit for us.
All right, thank you.
Lost her mic.
No, it's, it's kind of temperamental.
See, I could change it back.
Okay, up next, Senator Michelle Reynolds. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Michelle Reynolds, state senator. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here today to give a legislative update and just kind of talk about some of the things we're working on at the Ohio General Assembly. I am State Senator Michelle Reynolds and I serve, uh, as the state senator for this community, Ohio Senate District 3, which encompasses the southern part of Franklin County, all of Madison County, and all of Pickaway County. And, um, I serve as the chair of the Housing Committee in the Senate. We are actually the only housing committee that the General Assembly has, and so I have the privilege of leading that charge as the. the privilege of leading that charge as the state's housing champion that is trying to make sure that we have adequate housing supply as we are growing tremendously in the state of Ohio. I also serve as the Vice Chair of our Judiciary Committee. I serve as the Vice Chair of our Workforce Committee, and I serve on the Committee for Agriculture and Small Business. So I wanted to come here tonight, as I understand that this is a public meeting, and I wanted to just give some high-level overview about kind of the state of affairs as it relates to housing in the state of Ohio. So as we know, that we are doing a very, very good job across the state, bringing in companies, bringing in jobs, creating more jobs, and making sure that, from an economic development standpoint, Ohio is winning. However, we are kind of at an inflection point because, as we welcome these historic levels of economic development, we face a parallel crisis, and that's a severe housing shortage. And through my work on the Committee on Housing, we actually took a statewide tour last General Assembly. We went across the state, divided the state into five regions, to be able to go and understand in all of the various regions across the state, what is the plight or what is the state of housing across the state. And we found that we have a severe housing shortage, and it stems from a lack of supply because housing, quite frankly, is just unaffordable. And it's like the tale of two cities, I like to say. In the urban corridor of the state, we have a lack of supply of housing because we just lack enough density for all of the people in the population that are there, that are working in our urban corridor. But also, in our rural areas, we have a housing crisis because there's not enough infrastructure or it's too expensive to build here because of the lack of infrastructure, and we have population decline. We have people that leave the rural communities and try to, you know, move to the cities closer to where there are jobs. And so for two very different reasons, however, with the inflationary pressures, we are having some housing challenges. In Franklin County alone, not just Franklin County, central Ohio, we are literally about two hundred thousand units down of affordable housing. So even if we built today, we would still be down, and we are projected to grow by another million people by the year 2050. And so as we are attracting all of this economic development, which is great news, right? We have companies that are relocating here, we're creating jobs here, and we're talking about high-paying jobs. Just in Pickaway County alone, in Asheville, we have Andrel that's coming. As you know, you've heard the announcement, and they're bringing about four thousand jobs to the region, and the average pay, the starting pay, is going to be about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and you don't need a college degree to get a job like that. So this is great news for our youth, our kids that are graduating from high school. They can go and get a technical education, two-year certification, and be able to land a job like that in defense logistics. Also, we have, of course, Intel, which is kind of on pause now, but we're talking about great manufacturing jobs, great tech jobs, data centers all over the place. So what we need to do as it relates to housing is make sure that we have places for people to live that are affordable, because I like to say, homes are where jobs go to at night. We can't expect to be a great economic engine, and then where do people live after they go to work? Do they just, you know, go off on a drone and go to another state or whatever? We want to keep the economic development, we want to keep the money circulating in our communities. That does not mean that we need to build everywhere we have land. We also need to be very careful, and we need to preserve some of our land, especially our agricultural land, because we know that that's where we farm, and that's where we grow our food, and that's how we feed Ohio. And so we need to be very strategic in the areas that we are building, and yet and still, we need to also be strategic in the areas where we need to preserve our land. So having said that, we have been working on some really good economic policy, housing policy in the state, and in this past budget, we had a couple of bills that we were able to pass through the budget that invested a landmark, a hundred and twenty-five million dollars in investment that actually will help the housing supply across Ohio. And those bills were, both of them were championed by me. I have, one of the bills is called the RED Bill, and that stands for Residential Economic Development Districts, and that's specifically to help cities and localities like you that, you know, we want you to be a part of the solution for your own community. We realize that everybody is not a one-size-fits-all approach, and so we want to give you the tools to be able to solve your own housing challenges. So one of those ways is creating what we call a Residential Economic Development District around any major economic development site. That is a red zone, so it's a twenty-mile radius around a major economic development site. And the way we define that major economic development site is that if there is a company that is staking a flag in the community that is going to bring at least seven hundred jobs or invest seven hundred million dollars in revenue, inject that into the community, then we are going to create this twenty-mile radius around that major economic development site. And we, as the state, are going to infuse grant dollars that go to the local jurisdictions that can help, it can help you build the infrastructure that's needed, so that way, when a developer comes, it's not as expensive to be able to build what we call workforce housing, because we want to be able to build housing that is affordable, that folks that are going to work close to their employment, they're able to afford that. And so we are incentivizing that. We are not coming and telling our local communities what to do. We realize that that is not the way we want to do things. We do respect home rule, but we want to give you the tools and the incentives to come to the table and say, you know what, we do have some economic development that's coming in our community. We definitely don't have necessarily the technical expertise, nor do we have the resources to be able to help with this. So the state is going to come in and allow you to apply for those grants for pre-development dollars. Now, in order to do that, we are asking those local jurisdictions to adopt pro-housing policies. That's pretty much the catch, right? That's the carrot and stick. You have to adopt some pro-housing policies that, in this specific district, it may look different, the zoning may look different, as it relates to building housing in this district, because we are trying to get density. So some of the things may be that you may relax some of the zoning criteria, not for the whole community, but for this specific district, recognizing that we want to build more density because we want more people to be able to afford where they're staying so that they can get to work. So instead of maybe having a two-story, or maybe that's traditional zoning, two-story property, you may allow three-story, or you may allow manufactured housing to be in this district. You may allow an accessory dwelling unit to be in this district. You may say that the setback doesn't have to be as much as it has to be with normal code. You may say that your water sewer tap fees are less expensive, your retention ponds. So we want you to be able to solve the problem for yourself, but we're just saying, for this money, we're asking you to get, to put your heads together, get a little creative, and say, how can we adopt pro-housing policies so that we're not making sure that zoning is a barrier, at least in this district, so that we can support our residents who are going to be working, our schoolteachers, our police officers, our working families that are going to be working close to their jobs, and that's what we want to help you do. A second bill that we got passed through the budget is, so that first bill, the RED Bill, is a twenty-five-million-dollar grant fund, so that is going to help significantly with our local jurisdictions to be able to work alongside development. The second one is a hundred-million-dollar Rural Residential Development Revolving Loan Fund, so it's a loan fund, and it's for our rural communities, but it's a very, very low-interest loan fund to allow them to be able to build out infrastructure and things like that. So it will be what we call a linked deposit program. It will allow the state of Ohio to leverage our balance sheet with our great banking relationships and our AAA credit rating. It'll allow us to leverage that to be able to get those jurisdictions that want to borrow for a development project, a very, very, very low-interest loan, so that they can afford that. And these things could be used together, but we recognize that seventy of our eighty-eight counties are rural areas, and they just, quite frankly, cannot afford the infrastructure that's needed to be able to build out housing. So at the end of the day, with these two tools, we are very, very hopeful that this will be a shot in the arm to be able to build more affordable housing across the state of Ohio. When we put this together and we mapped it, we saw that there are about sixty-two sites that, across the state, that would qualify for this, and that's what's currently in the pipeline. That's not necessarily what may be coming, but it is a step in the right direction. It certainly doesn't solve the entire problem, but it certainly is a step in the right direction. And so I just wanted to stop by today to answer questions that you may have, let you know that that is currently a bill that has been passed into legislation. It's currently at the Ohio Department of Development for them to come up with all of the rules. It will go to our JCAR Committee, which is our Joint Committee on Rules, to be voted on, and once it is, it will be in full force, and you'll be able to apply for projects that you have, even in your own community, that may help this city be a partner in solving your own housing challenges. So with that, I will open for any questions you may have about this or anything else that, you know, I know we're dealing with property taxes and all those various things. I'm happy to answer questions.
So the twenty-mile radius that you discussed, do we have a project within twenty miles that would qualify this city that you can think of?
I don't have the map in front of me, so I'm not quite sure if there's, there probably is, but it seemed to be in balance across the whole state of Ohio, so, yep. But I'm happy to take a look at that and share that map.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Senator, with the JCAR working on this, what kind of a timeline ballpark?
They're literally working right now. So we just got back from our summer break, and actually, yesterday was our first Senate session. However, this was passed into law at our budget, so it's usually a ninety-day turnaround, so we're right about there. And I have talked with the Department of Development, they're just about done with the rules, and it will go to JCAR very, very shortly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have DJ Jones.
Daryl Jones, 266 Lafayette. I've lived here in London for over twenty-seven years now, been a business owner for coming up on twenty-one years. So here tonight in support of the development at Madison Reserve. As a business owner, clearly, growth in this community for all business owners is a positive. In the last two decades, I've seen, you know, many businesses come and go, and I'm not saying that's all due to the lack of residents in the community, but I think it's a positive. I think we could all agree that development and growth is coming to London, and as a business owner, I welcome that development. Now, as a resident of this community that's raised their family here, I can understand some of the apprehension about the speed of that development and the infrastructure to support it. And so I would tend to throw my support to those that are pouring their money into this community, that have lived here, have called this place home, have built other businesses here, and have a vested interest in trying to do what they feel is best for this community. So I know the Gross family and have known him for many years, and in some of our conversations, I do believe that, Paul Doody, he is a businessman, I do believe that he has London's interests to heart. I think my kids have graduated school with his kids, and so I know them well, and I don't think that they would do anything personally detrimental to what they have called their home for the last twenty-five-plus years. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, did you have anything on the Madison Reserve or audience concerns? Just audience concerns?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll wait until we get to that. Up next, Henry Comer.
Hello, Henry Comer, 55 South Oak Street, here in the great city of London. It's a little bit different to be on this side. I am also here in support of Madison Reserve. I'd like to take this time to thank the Gross family for their continued dedication and interest in helping to make London a great place to live. Their proven success has created jobs and growth opportunities for our local businesses and local economy. It's good to see that, over the past several recent years, interest to invest in London has held steady. Even though there are several other investors, I think it is refreshing to have locals that care enough to keep their resources here in our city, as they have a vested interest in helping the city grow, and may show excited dedication to the project. With a proven ability to successfully complete projects, I hope that the Gross family continues to choose our city for investments versus other cities that may be more accommodating to change. Madison Reserve is, if fully approved, will offer about two-hundred-and-forty-five or so beautiful homes. Each home will be built with the specific amenities of the homeowner. Some may choose basic features, while some may choose to go more elaborate. Either path will have an impact on the cost of the home. The homeowner ultimately decides what is affordable or not, not the builder or the developer. The price of the home will be determined by the home buyer. In most recent history, new home sales have attracted buyers who are interested in buying a home with more amenities, which increases the sale price of the homes within the development. Home buyers who are willing to purchase above the basic price help to increase the potential growth within the city. This can allow for more amenities like shopping and food options in the city. It will also help to increase income to the city through employment tax. Growth for the city is inevitable, and through processes like building and planning and council action, we can be proactive to welcome growth instead of reactive, where other provisions may need to be put into place in order to accommodate the inevitable exponential growth here in London. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Caleb Comer.
My name is Caleb Comer. I live at 55 South Oak Street here in London. I came here in support of the Madison Reserve community. As my generation begins to get older, more and more of my peers are beginning to look for places to live and raise families. That being said, London, Ohio, has been a place I've grown fond of, and a place I'm glad I was able to grow nearly all of my youth. I believe this housing development is an opportunity for the young adults like myself to live in our home and afford their families with the peace and community that the city has benefited my family and many others. I hope that many of the people I attended high school with will be able to return from college, the military, and other expeditions to a city that has grown to accommodate them. And I believe that this project is a step towards being able to call many of my deeply cherished friends neighbors again. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Kelly Stuckey.
My name is Kelly Stuckey, and I live at 1116 Cayford Court. I'm also here in support of Madison Reserve. My home is located next to Johnson's Creek, and although I'm extremely happy that Johnson's Creek is increasing my home value, I'm also realistic in that not everyone can afford those houses. I worked in education for thirteen years as an EMIS coordinator, and too frequently, I watched the turnover in teachers and staff, good, good teachers and staff, because they couldn't afford to live in the district. As I now have children in this district, I would like to see consistency in their education. Affordable housing can reduce the turnover rate and build a more stable, experienced staff. My husband was born in London, and he knew he My husband was born in London, and he knew he wanted to raise his family here, and I wish Madison Reserve would have been an option for us when coming back. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Boyd, three-sixty-four Ashford Avenue. Get my notes here. First, I want to thank Senator Reynolds for the great information. It was really encouraging to hear some of those things, and so it's good, good, good information for the future that we've got here. I won't, I won't beat a dead horse. I've been here before. I've been here for the Planning Commission meeting as well as for the past council meeting, and one of my concerns was that the density of the project is too high. Not that it needs to be at the seventy-five-hundred square feet, but that the four-thousand-square feet, forty-two-hundred that we're looking at is, it's just awfully tight. I'm glad to hear that traffic is being studied or being looked at now, because initially when this was, when this was done, it wasn't at that point, and I don't feel that the neighborhood impact was fairly considered when the Planning Commission meeting was done with the number of people that were there speaking about the problems that they saw with it. One question that I do have, and this is something that I think we need to look at, and going forward, we have to make sure this is something that is an issue. If this is truly affordable, the way that, the way that this is going below the fifty-two, excuse me, fifty-six-hundred-and-twenty-five feet, square feet that you can on a normal lot through a PUD is based on affordability. And if, if this is affordability because it is at the, at the discretion of the Planning Commission, what is and what isn't affordable is in the air. It's up to what somebody determines. I, while I agree that for, for some, that is going to be an excellent first-time starter home, it's still out of reach of at least fifty percent of the population that we have That's not that we can solve that problem with this housing development. It means to me that if that's not affordable housing, then the lot size can't be that small. If it is going to be that small based on the affordable housing, I want to understand how do we enforce that? How do we enforce that it was that affordable housing dollar when it, when it actually sells? This is what it was given, and how do we enforce that when we look at that? Because once it is built, once the land is laid out, and once the lots are done and built, we can't go back. So how do we make sure that that's enforced? Good question. I don't have answers, but it's something that needs to be considered. The bright point that I do see out of all this, though, and looking through it, is, and this is stepping back away from the project itself, is I think that it shows that we do need to review our, review and reform, look at our zoning, our zoning ordinances that we have out there, specifically dealing with the PUD. The PUD, while it does offer a lot of benefits for the city to be able to work with, if it's, if it's not implemented well, it can actually be a nightmare for you and cause you a lot of, a lot of grief. Green space and parks and things of that nature that could be asked for, you know, recreation area for these small lots would be much better. I don't think that the walking zone, the walking pass is adequate enough for that. But I think what we need to do is look at reviewing that zoning, and how do we do that wording? Knowing that it is at the discretion of what is and what is not affordable, I think if we could define that and tie that in some way to within a range of the, of the median income, something along that line, what determines is affordable and not for the community, and making sure that it matches would be something that would work. Part of the trade of a PUD is trading that density, and that as it comes in, for the different amenities and things that you can add in addition to that, that are not normally out of the standard R, R-one-through-fours. I do know that it's been said, it's been said this evening, that that is, that it's a great home, it's good starters, and it's things like that. I have no problem with that whatsoever, and agree with that. I want to see the new starter homes coming in. I want to see the growth going as we are, and, and continue with that. I just want to make sure that as we're doing it, we're doing it with what makes sense for, for the most people in the, in the community as we can. And with that, that is, that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next, Reagan Gross.
Good evening. My name is Reagan Gross. I live at eleven-fifty U.S. Highway forty-two. A few meetings ago, it was asked why my siblings and I were here, so I'm going to start by addressing that. My siblings and I are here because we're the ones invested in this development, not our father. While he's been a huge mentor and has taught us many valuable lessons, that's his only role. And although my brother Chaney isn't here, he's unable to attend because he's serving as a second lieutenant in the United States Marine Corps, and he's equally as invested. I recently graduated from the University of Kentucky with a business degree in management and sales. Through my studies and own personal experiences, I've developed a deep desire to always aim higher and pave my own way. Entrepreneurship isn't just a career path for me, it's a mindset. I'm always looking for ways to improve, grow, and make a lasting impact. And for me, that starts here in my local community, the one I was born and raised in. I truly didn't realize how much I loved London, despite what my parents would say, until I moved away. But what I've discovered is, it's hard to find attainable, affordable homes here. And frankly, I can't continue to work my remote job from my parents' basement forever. The reality is, London needs more attainable homes, something that not only benefits the community, but it gives young people like me a chance to reside here and thrive. One of the most important lessons I learned growing up was be the change you want to see. Yes, this development's going to bring change to London. No one's going to argue against that. But change isn't always a bad thing. We've heard everyone's concerns, but most of those concerns stem from a deep love for London. So my question's this: Why wouldn't we want to share the love we have for our community and invite others to experience the same sense of belonging? I know this development's going to create new opportunities. It's going to ignite the dream of being able to afford a home. It's going to bring more families here, and it's going to keep the heart of London beating strong. I'm not just looking to build homes, I'm looking to build a stronger, more vibrant community. And before I close, I feel like it's important to address the misinformation that's spread about me, my family, and my project that we're pursuing here in London. I personally have felt attacked by Jim Boyd, how he came in so aggressively last meeting, and has been spreading misinformation because he's currently running for a city council seat. He made numerous false claims about our company and our development. On his website, he states Gross Point Land Holdings is involved in three other projects in London. We have nothing to do with London Landing, we have nothing to do with Johnson Creek, and we have nothing to do with the gated condos that, he said, I don't really know what that's about. It's simply not true, spreading lies. Gross Point Land Holdings wasn't even created when those developments started. How could that be involved? The only development I'm involved in, that I've invested in, is the Madison Reserve. These may sound like small details, but when a candidate's running for a position and is willing to mislead the community in writing, that should matter to everybody. Mr. Boyd also says he wants to bring three to five hundred jobs to London, which we could agree, that would be great for our community. It sounds good in theory, but what are we going to do when we need a place for those people to live? I've lived in London my entire life. Like I said, I just graduated from business school, and I chose to come back here and be a part of this community. And I'm seeing the firsthand, like firsthand, the shortage of affordable homes. And in business school, the most fundamental lesson they teach you is if there's a problem, you go out and create the solution. That's what my brothers and I did. We created the solution. We chose to be a part of this community. On Jim Boyd's website, it states, "When we focus on business growth and good jobs, we raise wages for everyone. That creates a stronger middle class, puts affordable housing back within reach, and builds a better quality of life for the next generation of London families." He makes the exception for my business and my business growth. He makes the exception for maybe I'm a part of the middle class, and this is how I continue to stay there. He's, last time he was at this meeting, he was very against this. He was making false claims, just like he was on his website, and attacking us online, and then coming in today trying to be more respectful. And for growing the next, they're bettering the quality of life for the next generation, we can't have a next generation if me and people like Caleb Comer can't come back and live here. To be clear, Gross Point Land Holdings, the LLC I created with my brothers, was built by me and my brothers, who was also including my older brother, who's not able to defend himself from the lies that are being spread and fabricated on a Facebook page because he's doing the selfless sacrifice in serving our country. Jim, he's a candidate who's trying to tear down what I've built, my business, my reputation, my future. It's wrong, and I'm not going to tolerate it. If we want to have a bright future in London, we can't support leaders who choose deception over the truth, wanting to incite panic to generate more votes. I'm not going to take a personal attack on my business, my company, so he can get political gain. We have to rise above the Facebook warriors who hide behind screens, posting lies on Facebook, posting lies on websites. They're pushing a false narrative to score these political points, and attempting to destroy whoever comes in their path, including me and my hard-working family. We have to be smarter than that, and we can't support a liar. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Ornette Bennett.
Pardon me, my nose started to run. My comments aren't really political either way, but it's something that's been said many years ago about a former president, and he said it seemed that the Democrats was having a convention, this little boy was selling kittens outside, their eyes were closed. A few weeks later, the Republicans was there and they had a convention, and went up and asked him, he said, "Well, I thought that you were selling these a few weeks ago as Democrat kittens." And he said, "Well," he said, "they're Republican now," he said, "their eyes are open." All I ask is, we get our eyes open and listen to the cries of these people to know that they're, they are being heard. Most of the time, they come and they feel, and they leave, and they go home and everything, they feel they've never been heard. So please listen to them and, and respond to their requests. Thank you.
Good evening. Matt Daly, ninety-nine Andrew Court West. So I've spoken to this council and the Planning Commission about this proposed development, addressing traffic, green space, parks, fiscal impacts, heat island effects, et cetera, et cetera. Tonight, I want to focus on whether this development actually meets the legal requirements of Chapter twelve-sixty-two of London's zoning code. So Section twelve-sixty-two dot oh-six explicitly requires that twenty percent of this tract be reserved for open space and outdoor recreational areas. The code continues, "Public utility and similar easements and right-of-ways are not acceptable for common open space dedication unless such land is usable as a trail or other open space use and has been approved for open space by the Planning Committee." I'm not sure if council has received the latest update of the actual plan, but over eighty percent of the open space that's designated there is ditch and a retention pond. How does that qualify? These are utility features, not usable recreation areas. Can council confirm this development provides the required twenty percent in actual usable open space? If not, the plan is legally deficient, and council should vote no. Second, Section twelve-sixty-two dot ten M-two requires the Planning Commission find that the anticipated traffic will not overload the street network outside the planned unit development. My neighbors and I have raised serious concerns about adding seven to eight hundred additional people to this small area. There's been talk about a traffic study being commissioned, but as of today, none of that information has been made available to the public. How can council find, how can council make the finding required by Section one-sixty-two dot ten M-two without a traffic study? How can we have an informed conversation about this project's impact when the data does not exist or has not been made public? Three, the entire purpose of the PUD is to provide superior public benefits that justify deviations from normal zoning standards. Section twelve-sixty-two dot ten F-three explicitly requires the benefits, combination of land uses, and interrelationships of lands used in the surrounding areas justify the deviation for the standard district regulations. What specific legally binding public benefit is this developer providing to justify allowing denser housing than normal zoning would permit? If council cannot identify those superior benefits, then the legal justification for a PUD does not exist. They say it's going to be affordable housing, but there is no standard set what is affordable. There's no actionable item that we can actually, council can take if they decide to charge whatever they want to charge. So for this reason, the plan is deficient, and council should vote no. Closing, council has authority under Section twelve-sixty-two dot ten twelve-J to attach conditions and safeguards to this approval. I urge you to vote no on this motion, but at the very least, if you move forward, exercise that authority and ensure this development truly meets our code's requirements for open space, traffic management, and public benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Ames.
My name is Teresa Ames. I live at three-twenty-one East High Street. My home lives, my husband and I live on the home on the corner of East High and Windsor. Windsor is going to be the, one of two ways to enter this neighborhood, which, you know, is a large block. You know, many concerns. I, I believe that land will be developed. I knew that, we knew that when we moved there fifteen years ago. I'm not opposed to that. I am opposed to, I'm also not opposed to affordable or attainable housing. I am, I am very concerned about the amount of traffic that's going to be driven out onto East High Street that already has a lot of traffic. It's a residential area. We have manufacturing beyond, starting with ADS, Nessun, Stanley, Staples, it goes on out of town, but this is a residential area where all of this traffic, if the two-hundred-and-sixty-nine homes are built there, four to five-hundred-plus vehicles will be coming out onto East High Street. I am concerned about pulling out of my driveway next to this main intersection and, and others, and all my neighbors. I am asking council, as I did before, what will council do? This traffic study hasn't been completed. Once the project starts, what will happen when the traffic is so congested? It, it changes all our lives. It changes all of our ways to travel to and from around town. I believe it's going to be a dangerous situation in a very short stretch of East High Street. So my concern is, what will you do to address it then, once the project's started? I need to get out of my driveway safely to go to work. The engineer suggested I make a right-hand turn, it would be the safest. That would direct me towards London, across over to Lafayette, which is already so congested. I work on forty-two in the Darting Building. I don't want to drive the opposite direction in a large circle into more traffic than I'm already going to be living in. So that is my concern, and I hope you take those concerns into consideration when you're voting. I would ask you to vote no, not on the whole project, but as it sits with the amount of houses. Four-point-nine houses on every acre in a fifty-five-acre span in a residential area is a lot of houses. It's going to be a lot of vehicles in a very small space. So like I said, I'm not opposed to the development, I'm, I just am very concerned about the amount of houses in a small space, and the amount of traffic that's going to drive into our short stint of East High Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Ann Mathewson. Up next, Anne Mathewson.
Hello, I'm Anne Mathewson. I recently graduated from Madison Plains, and I'm currently attending Columbus State, majoring in Biology with plans to go to vet school. Growing up, showing livestock and being in 4H, I realized our town could use a large animal veterinarian nearby, and I would love to do that for this town. This is why I'm in support of the Madison Reserve. Coming out of college and starting to work, I would need somewhere to live. Staying in London is a priority to me, but would not be possible without attainable housing. Additionally, my parents own a small business in London, but employees like to live near their workplace. This isn't possible without attainable homes. So for my family's business to flourish and to have employees, the Madison Reserve is needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, all. My name is Cole Antle, and I'm partner in Westwood Collective. We are actively in redevelopment of aging building stock in downtown London. And since the moment we visited your charming downtown, we sense a tremendous potential here. Our work is far from finished. We truly believe London is on the cusp of something great. Along the way, our founder, Andy Warnock, and I have been fortunate to not only invest in buildings here, but also the people that call London home. We held a public Q and A upon our arrival. Residents were skeptical of outsiders coming to town and changing landscape. Rather, we simply came to enhance it. We genuinely believe the small town, that if small-town America isn't evolving, it's dying. There's too much history here to allow that. For our work to continue in downtown London, we are proponents of prudent growth. With more rooftops and residents come more shoppers at local stores, more families dining in local restaurants, and a stronger, more vibrant community as a whole. We greatly appreciate that Paul Gross shares this vision and is willing to take this risk of bringing diversity of the housing stock to London. As we often say at Westwood, rising tides lift all boats. Through each of his developments, Paul and his family have left that corridor of London better than he found it, and we believe this project will be no exception. We're here tonight with nothing to gain in this particular case, but we do believe this development will keep the momentum going and revitalizing this hometown. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Melissa Canny. I live at 1053 Margate Circle. Been there 26 years. I have worked in the social services field for 36 years. All of those years were here in Madison County. I understand you're discussing and considering various housing projects, and I'm here simply just to share with you what I've been sharing with local leaders, including Mr. Clausor, Paul Gross, for many years now, which is really a plea for more housing options for our lower-income residents. I spent my career working with these residents. Most, if not all, were trying to, were trying their best to make a life for themselves and their families, a life where they could have a safe place to live, food and utilities, reliable transportation, good health, and stable, thriving relationships with family and friends. Most of these folks were working, but their jobs didn't bring them in enough income to support their monthly budget for necessities. They could never get ahead and were barely managing. Many also were experiencing some type of stressor that impacted them, whether it be mental illness, domestic violence, job loss, car problems, loss of a spouse, no health insurance, or oftentimes opening up their homes for family and friends to live with them. As a community, we have worked to assist these fellow residents. Things like the free clinic, the help house, community action, family council, Department of Human Services, childcare services, just to name a few. In all my years working, I found our community to be incredibly caring, kind, giving, and helpful. I spent my last nine years working as the student support specialist at London City Schools and retired in 2024. My job was to work with students and families experiencing hardship and to offer help with those hardships. Why? So that students could focus on learning. For example, it's hard to concentrate on your math lesson when you had no idea where you were going to sleep the night before, and the stress of that situation has you literally falling asleep in class or feeling very anxious. I will tell you, the referral I dreaded most receiving was that of a homeless student or of a family with an imminent housing need. And why is that? It's because I virtually had no resources to offer, because the options we have available in London are just not sufficient. Over the years, I made a point to have a conversation with leaders in London to relay the needs I saw based on my experience and to ask what can be done about it. And now I'm coming to you. Housing options for low-income residents is one of the greatest needs myself and others like me in the social service field have been concerned about for the past decade. You all have a very important job to do as the representative of the residents of London. As you continue to discuss and consider housing options for London, I urge you to please make sure to consider a wide range of options and to please make housing options for residents who are at the lower end of the income range a priority. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So you believe that $230,000 house meets that criteria for lower-income people?
I'm not specifically here to address this particular housing project. I'm just here to relay concern about having all options available for all income ranges.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Real quick. Aaron Miller. You had Cypress, did you want to, and something else, but I can't read it. Was this for Madison? Okay.
My name's Aaron Miller. My address is 10405 Hayden Run Road. I attend Cypress Church. Super happy that, you know, we're going to have, hopefully have a location in the city of London, and obviously urge council to approve that. As for the Madison Reserve project, I'm a local business owner. I'm a real estate attorney. We own a title company as well. So the affordability piece, most of the things that everybody has spoke on, I do think that there's a need for that. There's a lot of projects. There does need to be some diversity. As Dr. Kramer pointed out, my wife, she's a school counselor at London. I'm a, I've coached the London's Kids Wrestling Program since 2015. She, my wife worked with Melissa for a long time. I've taken kids home. I've bought, you know, tires for, you know, for kids' parents. I've seen where there's a need in my practice. You know, unfortunately, we do landlord-tenant things. Mr. Hayes, to answer your question directly, right? $230,000. Unfortunately, in this market, in this day, since price of COVID in real estate has exploded, I do think that's, that would be affordable. I've seen, you know, to have a brand-new home, if you don't have to buy something and, you know, do the repairs, right? Some of my clients in my practice, they buy, you know, rehab homes. Most of those prices, right, exceed the cost that, you know, is being offered. So I do think that's a big piece. The other one, if the more development to the city, the tax dollars, right? I mean, then as far as being a coach and so forth, you know, there's certainly a need for a rec center. So hopefully, the more tax dollars that the city gets, I do think that could be used for that as well.
Thank you.
That's it, unless there's questions.
Good evening. Kevin Flax, 77 Flax Drive. My business partner, Aaron Miller, just spoke. I want to reiterate some of what he just said as well. I do a lot of real estate closings. I see a lot of need for that price point that you were pointing out. Yes, there's probably some need for some lower price points as well, but those are hard to find. A lot of the investors, like he'd mentioned, come in, buy a house, rehab it, turn around and sell it. They've got more into that than the 220 price point, 250 price point sometimes. So there is a need for a lower price point house for your teachers, your factory workers, prison farm workers. There's a lot of need for a lower price point than the 300, 350 that seems to be the prevalent price point right now. So I just wanted here to tell you that you do need to consider finding a way to have a little bit of a lower price point than what's currently available around town. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Joe Mullins. I run a business here in London, Ohio, Allstate Exteriors at 312 Lafayette Street. I've been here for 25 years. I've raised my kids here. I've got six children, and I've got three grandkids. And honestly, I would love to see them be able to move here so that I get to see them more often, right? Not that they live far away, but I don't want them to have to live on the west side of Columbus or out toward Washington Courthouse. So if it's a possibility to make that happen, that's me being greedy that I would like to see them more, but that's the point Caleb made it. It's at home with me. So a couple other things. The housing demand is real. Families want to move here, right? Not just our families, but other people want to move here. Second is, from what I've read, is this is growth within rules, right? The projects have been reviewed. It's the, if they're, they're meeting the building requirements, then they're, and they're being built safe, and they're designed for what the city codes say and what the future for the city is, then, you know, that's, that's what we're looking at. The growth, the growth benefits for businesses like mine would be really good, right? I would like, I would like to have more customers. But it's not just that business. I mean, the restaurants, the stores, all of those things will be benefited. And I know that it is going to be tough for people to lose fields and things that they felt like was partially theirs, right, because they got to enjoy it while someone else owned it. I believe that responsible growth is about balance. We want safe, attractive neighborhoods. We also want the opportunity for working families, for young professionals, and for senior citizens that want to downsize, and, but they want to stay in the community. So I do agree that the housing is needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Dillian, I live at 66 East Fifth Street. I'm proud to share that I've been a full-time real estate agent for 17 years, and during that time, I've had the privilege of not only helping countless buyers and sellers, but also managing and mentoring agents in a local real estate office here. I was born and raised here, and I bring deep roots and local knowledge to every transaction. This year alone, I've successfully closed just shy of 19 million in real estate sales, and I only share that number to highlight the experience and expertise I've built over the years. I truly believe these accomplishments reflect my standing as a local expert in real estate. Madison Reserve is being proposed as an affordable housing development. What does that mean? I think many Londonites believe that means low-income housing. This term, often, these terms often get used interchangeably, but they are not the same. Here's the difference. Affordable housing is priced so that households spend no more than about 30% of their income on mortgage payments plus utilities. These developments are generally built by private developers or nonprofit organizations. Government-assisted housing or low-income housing is where the government directly provides or subsidizes housing costs. They do this primarily through public agencies, such as local housing authorities or federal programs like HUD. They generally focus on very low-income or vulnerable populations at or below 50% AMI, which is the area median income. The key differences are affordable housing comes from affordable pricing mechanisms or subsidies at the development site. Government or low-income housing comes from ongoing subsidies or direct ownership by the government. So the target audience for affordable housing is lower-to-middle-income families or workforce households. In short, affordable housing is a broader concept about pricing homes relative to people's income, while government or low-income housing specifically involves public subsidies or ownership targeted to those with a greater need. The best statistic I could find for Madison County was from the 2023 census, and it shows the median household income for Madison County is $83,229. It cites the per capita income or per-person income at $36,265. If couples are assumed to be a two-person household earning somewhat above per capita times two, you could estimate that two times $36,265 is $72,530 as a baseline for a dual-income couple. I had a local lender break down this scenario. Household income of $73,500 a year or $6,125 a month, home price is $250,000. The loan assumption, they put 3.5% down, which is standard for FHA, with a 30-year loan at 5.75%, because Arbor Homes, who will be the home builder, has their own in-house lender who offers lower interest rates if you use their in-house lender versus an outside lender, and today's current interest rate is 6.25% for an average FHA buyer. The monthly principal and interest would be $1,386. The property taxes, I averaged about $250 a month or $3,000 a year. Their total housing payment with taxes will be $1,636 a month. If we do an affordability check, 30% of gross monthly income is what they say makes a house affordable, and that is below the 30% affordability threshold. So in conclusion, with a $73,500 combined household income, a couple in Madison County could afford a $250,000 home. That also allows extra room in their budget for homeowner's insurance, which would add another $110 a month. I took the average for Madison County for this size of home. I have read Jim Boyd's article regarding affordable housing, and he cites that most families here in London would have to have spotless credit, no debt, and a 10% to 15% down payment to qualify for such a home. I am not sure where he got these facts, but I can tell you they are erroneous, as I have sold several Arbor Homes in the last few years, and they work with USDA loans, which are zero money down, and they also work with FHA loans, which are 3.5% down, and they go as low as 660 for a credit score. I had clients last year with just such credit scores, and they bought an Arbor Home for $350,000 with 3.5% down. He also cites London's average median household income at $61,000. I also believe that is incorrect, as I just cited for you what the Census Bureau says. The houses at Madison Reserve are to start at $225,000, and I can tell you, this is a much-needed price point for London and all of Madison County. I have a pipeline of people waiting for this to come to fruition. They are your neighbors. They're your friends. They are the warehouse workers at Stanley, Ace Hardware, Google. They are the mechanics and truck drivers at BST, the servers at your favorite restaurant in town, and they need the affordable housing. I have heard of the complaints about the lots only being 12 feet apart, but that meets the current city code requirements and is common and prevalent in central Ohio. I'm using Galloway Ridge subdivision, which is behind Kroger's on Route 40 in Galloway. It's a perfect example. The houses were built behind Kroger, started in the 90s by Dominion Homes as affordable housing mixed with higher-priced homes, and it has flourished. Their lots are 14 feet apart, and as far as being a fire hazard, the Ohio Building Code contains provisions about fire-resistant ratings for exterior walls when buildings are closer than certain distances. For example, if a wall is less than 10 feet from another structure, it must have a fire-resistant rating. These are 12 feet apart. Obviously, being a real estate agent, I would welcome more housing. I think it's very needed. Yes, I will make money, but I will make money whether these homes come to the community or not. I want to see our neighbors and friends be allowed to own their own homes and not pay the exorbitant price that most are paying in rent. Rentals in London are averaging $1,600 a month for a three-bedroom. What if we don't allow this housing development to go forward, and another developer comes in and wants to build apartments? It could happen. It could happen. Do you really want that along 142? If you want to see housing values go down, allow that to help happen. London needs affordable housing.
Brandy and Jeff Lyons.
We're at 316 Andrew Court, so we're right next to the new neighborhood. I'm a pretty reasonable person. I don't have any complaints about anything in general. My view of this matter is that it was never, excuse me, it was never always going to be farmland. The people obviously wanted to sell the land. There was options that could have been there, could have been a gas station, could have been another warehouse, could have been apartments. In my opinion, obviously, yes, it could have been another farmer that chose to take that land over, but having nice homes there that meet the same general property value of what our homes are there now is the lesser of all the evils. I certainly like having the field there. It's nice, but it was never always going to be a field. That's just a fact of the matter. We have warehouses that are right outside the neighborhood now, and it's noise all night long, 3:00 in the morning. So that would have been the worst-case scenario for me, if some other type of factory. So having the homes there, certainly reasonable to me. My only personal concern is, we both work at home, and now, two to three times a month, there's a power surge in the neighborhood. So I just want to make sure that the infrastructure is there for the electric, electricity in the area. We're not going to have that be a continued growth of a problem. So if we're going to have power surges or issues with internet electricity going out during the day while we're trying to work, that's a minimal concern. I really have no other big concerns about it. That's, I'm happy to see the homes go there because frankly, I'm tired of driving to Hilliard every time I want to go have a good time. Certainly, there are some things here that are nice. There's some nice restaurants here and things of that nature. We need to get our basics. We have that option here. But it would certainly be nice to see the community grow and be able to do more things in the city of London, and that's only going to come with more folks being here to support the community. So for that matter, I'm personally happy to see it go there. The only thing I would like better is for it to remain a field and a farm. That would certainly be nice, but hey, it is what it is, you know? That's just, it's, community's got to grow, and that's, that's the only way it's going to get done. That's my opinion. Thank you.
I'm speaking for myself.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brandy Lyons. I grew up out here in London, Ohio. Been out here about roughly 40 years after we moved here from California. That neighborhood is my childhood home. I purchased it in the beginning. I was totally against this building because it was a farmland. I grew up there. Like I said, like, it's been the place that I go to for my mental health, because I work with, in the Ohio Health field, taking phone calls for 32 doctors' offices a day, suicide calls, death notifications, angry people cussing at me all day. So going outside to the field and sitting on my deck and enjoying that has been amazing. But after speaking with Paul, Wes, and Tom Coghlan personally, and getting to know who they are personally, because I had no idea who they were. I just know by social media, and you can't always go by social media. But after speaking with them and seeing the new additions that they decided to make, I am trying to be positive. I got emotional today seeing the farmers out there plowing. I pretended to call my mom crying upset because, you know, it's my last, my last year of enjoying sanity out there. So while I was not for it in the beginning, things have changed. They are willing to make accommodations. They are willing to hear you out. They're trying to be good neighbors, and I appreciate that. So I am leaning towards being okay with the neighborhood. It's just been really tough because that's my sanctuary for sanity. So that's all I have.
Liz Wood.
I'm Liz Wood. I live at 304 East High Street. For the older folks who have been here for a long time, it's the Hackett House. So we are in the section of three houses with field on either side. Nobody in our household has an issue with housing coming, certainly not affordability. I work with Andrea. I'm a Realtor too, and that's not the problem. The density is the problem. There's too many. There's just too many. And people need green space. And like you were saying, I sit outside in the morning with my cup of coffee and my dog's just staring out at that field, watching the sun come up, and I love it. That was one of the reasons we bought that house, was for that peace and quiet. We didn't want to live in the city. We just wanted to be close enough to be able to get places reasonably. Well, now that's being kind of taken away, and we understand that, you know, it's Paul's property and he's going to do what he wants. And you've worked with us, and we appreciate that. The further thing that we thought about after kind of sitting back for a while and just letting it resonate is what does this mean? Is, as I explained the last time, we have a three-quarter acre lot, and it's a square. And there's going to be five backyards in our backyard, and that's absolutely not okay. It is not okay for us to have five families and their day-to-days right in our backyard. It's just too many. It's just too many. So we ask you to think about that. Obviously, traffic is a big question mark for any of us trying to come and go who live on High Street, and that's where our driveways are. One other thing I thought of after we talked with Paul originally at the community meeting was about putting the Arbor Forties, I can't say it, along the property line there on their side of the easement, and that's great, but further thought was, people aren't going to walk to the streets, to the exit streets, to get to High Street if they're riding, kids riding their bikes, or, or just walking the dog or whatever. They're coming through our yard. They're coming straight through our yard. We don't want that. That's our property as much as your property is yours. So we just asked that maybe consider putting up, like, doing the whole property with a white vinyl fence, six-foot privacy fence, to encompass that property and make it so that that, that community is its community. It would just help kind of keep noise down, keep traffic down. We certainly don't want people running through the yard and getting the dogs amped up and, or waking us up if, you know, they're having a good time some night. So that's all we ask, is just to put a little more thought to those of us who do live here already and bought this home to be the forever home and still want that to happen. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Adam Sexton.
Adam Sexton, 104 Canterbury Drive here in London. I'm here to speak in favor of the Reserve Development and just development in general, really. I've been a lifelong resident here all my life. One of the things I really saw over my time here is just the struggle that the small business has had, specifically downtown, historical part of that. And just growing up, I had a hard time understanding that until I kind of experienced it when my parents opened a small storefront downtown. And I remember the first month, everybody was excited. I helped them get everything ready. The first, first month, it was quite clear that it wasn't going to work because there just wasn't any shoppers. There wasn't any people, no traffic. So that did change one day slash evening when London had the White Lights Festival that we do every year for Christmas. Lots of people, lots of traffic, incredible night of sales, probably made up for the previous month and even the month afterwards. That business ultimately failed, but that night proved to me that it wasn't because of the store, it wasn't because of the product, the concept, or even the location. It just came down to, there was no, there were no people, there were no shoppers. So I don't want to continue to see that. And I know, like, you can go through London now and maybe see one storefront that's empty. Somebody comes in, three months later, it's a new, it's a whole new concept, whole new So obviously, you know, more housing equals, equals more people, more people, more customers. You've heard it a couple times tonight already, too. The growth is going to happen. It's inevitable. And one real blessing that we all have right now is the group of people behind this growth really care about our community, our town, and our people. So even a firsthand example earlier where, you know, Mr. Gross has talked to residents that are affected, because, you know, he really cares. So if we're resistant to that, we're going to just invite outside investors that might not have our best interests. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jeremiah Campana, Campiana.
Jeremiah Campana, 117 South Union Street. Just wanted to share my two cents on the housing development that I've shared with Mr. Eads and Mr. McDaniels, thought I'd share with everybody. In the little bit of research that I did, there seems to be a 100% risk of tax increases when population surges outpace local job growth. In short, more residents mean more demand on essential services. Think schools, roads, police, and utilities, but without a corresponding boost in jobs and the commercial tax revenue they bring, the added strain often leads to higher taxes for everybody. Here's why that happens. Based on patterns in similar Ohio suburbs, service demand outstrips revenue growth. New families add kids to classrooms and calls to emergency services faster than simple addition of more taxpayers can cover. For example, in Delaware County, population has ballooned over 20% since 2020, with another 85% jump expected by 2050. The growth prompted a 10% increase in the senior services levy in 2022 to keep pace with demands even as job density lagged behind residential expansion. Simply put, the pie gets bigger, but the services slice grows disproportionately without economic anchors. Also, Ohio's property taxes are tied to rising home values fueled by influxes like this project, but commercial properties tied to jobs don't multiply as quickly in bedroom communities like this one. In Union County, significant residential growth since 2010 has driven a 27% average property value spike for 2025, translating to real tax hikes, with some owner, some homeowners facing an $800 addition of annual property taxes despite modest job gains. Upfront infrastructure costs like extending sewers or roads often hit the general funds, too, forcing levies or millage tweaks. I could not find a single counter example in an Ohio rural community where unchecked residential growth didn't eventually pressure taxes upward. It's a classic imbalance where more people pay in, but the costs per person creep up without local job creation to diversify the base. I moved out of Columbus to London because of the insanely high taxes in Columbus. I moved out of Columbus to London because London is everything Columbus is not, so.
Thank you. Okay, I have a name on here I can't read, but I can read, 17 South High Street. Okay. Up next, Paul Gross.
Paul Gross, 1150 South, 1150 US 42 Southeast. I'm here really just to, I'll have an opportunity to present our, our development later, and there's been a lot of talk about that, but there's another, there's another church that's on for public hearing tonight, too. And I'm the only adjoining landowner, well, I guess that's not true because the chamber's next to him, but I'm the primary adjoining landowner to the Cypress Church, and I'm vehemently in support of that because I think that they've demonstrated that they do a good job. They've continued to grow because their services are clearly sought after. Yes, they'll bring traffic, too, because people are going to come to church, and I think that's a good thing. So I'm here to speak for the record on behalf of Cypress Church as their adjoining neighbor.
All right. Thank you. And we will move on to Cypress. We have Dave, can't read the last name, 409 East Third Avenue.
Dave Caldi. I'm the architect that's working on the Cypress Church project. I've been going to Cypress for 13 years, so it's pretty cool to see how they've grown and different campuses, and Jody's done a really good job. So just here for any questions if, if we get into that. So obviously in support of the project.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on either, either public hearing?
Mr. President, we did have that email from Tim Weinbrenner. Do you want that read at some point now or in, in audience concerns?
You have it up.
I can, I can pull it up.
Yeah, go ahead.
We did receive an email from Tim Weinbrenner earlier today. He wanted this read. Dear Mayor and Members of Council, I'd like to begin by stating clearly that I'm not opposed to growth in our city. I fully recognize that if a city is not growing, it risks become stagnant, becoming stagnant, and thoughtful growth can bring new opportunities for our community. My concern is not with the concept of development, but with ensuring that such growth is carried out responsibly and with careful planning. As a homeowner who resides along the state route, I understand that living on a major roadway comes with higher volumes of traffic. However, I believe the city still has a responsibility to exercise due diligence to ensure that these roads remain safe and do not become overburdened. Already, I've observed an increase in traffic congestion along the state route, which has led to drivers diverting through smaller side roads. This pattern is creating additional hazards in neighborhoods not designed to carry such traffic, and it raises serious concerns about long-term roadway safety for both residents and commuters. With this in mind, I respectfully request that the City Council clarify whether documented, data-driven studies have been conducted in relation to the proposed housing development. Specifically, number one, a traffic impact study to analyze congestion, roadway capacity, and the effects on both the state route and surrounding neighborhood streets. Number two, water and sewer capacity analysis to determine whether current infrastructure can support the development. Number three, stormwater retention, whether it be retention ponds, where is the groundwater going to be routed depending on yard space? Is this going to be R2 or R3? What are the implications of changing to R3? Public services evaluation, including police, fire, EMS, and schools to ensure the city can handle increased demand without reducing the quality of services. Next, traffic and recycling service assessment to confirm what waste management resources are sufficient, pardon me. Next, fiscal impact and revenue analysis to provide a balanced look at projected property tax and sales tax revenues compared to the cost of additional public services and infrastructure maintenance. When I ask about these studies, I am not simply referring to verbal input or informal opinions from department heads. While their perspectives are valuable, what is needed are hard data studies, objective, documented assessments conducted by or in consultation with the street department, police, fire, and other relevant agencies. Having this type of verified data provides several benefits. It ensures transparency. It allows both the council and the public to make decisions based on facts rather than assumptions, and it creates a written record that can guide future planning and accountability. If these studies have been completed, I respectfully request that they be made available for public review so that residents can understand how potential impacts have been evaluated and addressed. I want to emphasize again that I'm not against development or growth. My only goal is to ensure that our community expands, as, pardon me, as our community expands, the growth is managed in a way that is safe, sustainable, and beneficial to both current and future residents. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to your response and to reviewing any studies or reports that may be available. Respectfully, Tim Weinbrenner, 249 East High Street, London, Ohio.
Is there anything? Council wants to address for a public hearing? All right, hearing not. They get a motion to exit public hearing and enter back into regular meeting.
Make a motion to exit public hearing and enter back into general council meeting.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stoll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDaniels?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eads?
Yes.
Okay, up next, communications announcements. There aren't none tonight. Audience concerns, we do have two. We have Jay Sell.
That was a mistake.
Okay.
I'm here to support something related to...
Okay.
Nick Markley, 25 West Fifth. President Peters, if I knew you were going to send me to the end of the line, I would have took a position on that. I don't have a position on Madison Reserve. I didn't really come to talk about that, but after listening to everyone, and I actually do watch every council meeting online, so thank you for having that. And, you know, my family's been, the Markleys have been here since the 1800s, so we have a vested interest in this community. here since the 1800s. So we have a vested interest in this community. I say that because would I like it to stay rural? Absolutely. It'd be great. It's not gonna happen. I talk to a lot of people around the community, and what I hear is that Mr. Gross is changing our community. He's doing this, he's doing that. He's not from here. Obviously, he's, he's been here, I think, 27 years now? 25. So he is, he is here. He is part of our community. His kids have grown up here. I, I think about my grandfather, who was an elected official in this county for over almost 50 years. And he used to say to me, you know, if, if London doesn't do something, it's going to die. And he was right. And we would have conversations in my late twenties, I'm 47 now, so it's been a while, and he would say, you know, up in Plain City, if they don't annex that property, Dublin's gonna come get it. In case, I don't know if any of you know, but Dublin's coming to get it. The same thing is going to happen to our community if we don't let it grow. I'm not saying anyone up here. I'm more directing to the community, and hopefully people are listening. I think that this man, he doesn't know me. I don't really know him. I haven't talked to him hardly ever before, but I watch these meetings. He is here at every meeting, every meeting. I went to the finance committee meeting the other night just because I wanted to go, and you were there. And I wanted to say, like, don't you have anything else to do? I know you do, but why, but, but, and I say that because I think that we have to realize that it's gonna grow. There's nothing you can do. The development is coming. It's good for the community. Does it change? Absolutely. It's gonna happen. However, you have someone, and I, and I just address you, not anybody else, not any partners, but you have somebody who has a vested interest in this community, and he wants to see it do well. Because, as he said before, this is his children. This is their future, just like I have children. Everybody has children. It's their future. So I think we should appreciate the fact that there's someone that is here in the community, that's investing their time, a lot of time, and a lot of money. And is he gonna make money? I hope so. I mean, if you don't, you know, you better do something, you better do something different. But, but he should make money. He's taking the risk. He should make the money. So, you know, I, I just think it's better to have someone that we know here promoting the development, you know, investing their own money as opposed to what you may get if you didn't have that. You may get somebody from outside who doesn't care anything about this community, and then when you get what you wish for, you all want what you get. So I really didn't plan to say that, but I, but I wanted to once I listened to everybody. What I came to really talk about was about a year and a half ago, I went into the mayor's office, and I had a picture of the basketball courts down at Cowling Park. And I said to the mayor, is there any way that you could help do something with this because somebody's gonna get hurt? And he said to me, where is that? And I said, it's down at the basketball courts at Cowling Park. My daughter spent a lot of time down there. And he said, absolutely. So he, I sent him the picture. He, I think, I would imagine it was Bill Long that he reached out to. They tried to seal that. The cracks were too big that it wouldn't take. So at that point, it got turned over to you all. And I want to thank Pat for starting that process, and I want to thank the council for approving that money. Because if you haven't been down there, it's beautiful, and it's a wonderful thing for our community. I know it wasn't cheap probably, but thank you for doing that. Thank you. And then the last thing that I want to talk about, can I have enough time? Is the position of the Safety Service Director. And that role, in my mind, is the most important role in the administration. The mayor's role is probably at 25,000 feet to see what's going on and to direct the ship. But the position that runs the day-to-day of this community is the Safety Service Director. And it's my belief, and I think that he will prove me right over time, that the city of London became much better when Mr. Saltzman became the Safety Service Director. I, I think you're gonna see a lot of changes, and I, and I think that the council will have a voice, and, and that this will be like this as opposed to my perception of what it was. So, long-winded, but I appreciate it. I appreciate what you've all done. Best wishes to you. Thank you.
And Nick, not only did they do Cowling, I believe they also did Mary Mack. I drove out and looked at that too.
I'd like to thank Nick for what he's doing with his business there on Fifth Street.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate the job you're doing there.
All right. Up next, committee reports. Greg?
Well, we've gotten through all that fun stuff. Now we get to do the other fun stuff. The Personnel Budget Finance Committee met on September 22. There's gonna be a lot of items that are gonna come up tonight that came from that meeting. A couple of things that I will, I like to give this information. Our revenue for the year is 18 million 318,392 dollars and some change, of which 4 million 199,484 dollars is bond money. So if we take that out, the revenue for the year is 14 million 118,907 dollars, and our expenses are 13 million 332 dollars, or 332,760 roughly. So it's good that we see that we have a little more income than we have going out. The tax department had a really good month. Evidently, somebody, there was, there was a state or something that settled, so they had a really good month. But for the year at this point, the general fund's up 7.61% and the fire fund is up 9.46%. And I'm always confused why there's a difference between the two, because they should be the same. But that, that always gets worked out. There's gonna be some things tonight. I want to bring one thing up very specifically. We have some, we have some good news. We, we're faced with cost overruns at the police department, the new building. It's unavoidable. I think we're gonna get more details, but we have an update that I think council's gonna be glad to hear. Mr. Saltzman, would you like to address on that, please? But you don't have a microphone.
So we've talked about it the last couple of council meetings, also in the committee meetings, some of the cost overrides with the police safety building. The, largely due to the underground, and we spent a lot of money, excess of 330,000, just additional funding just to bring the underground soils, the stabilization that to move forward. If you, if you looked out there, you see the walls are going up. We're gonna continue with that this week. Went to finance last week. We can have to go and ask for an additional $600,000 to complete the project. We've already went through our contingency and that of the architect, and we're to the point we have to order additional things. We have to have that money to move forward. That also included $136,000 additional money, I think, I believe I mentioned the last meeting for the funding for, at the time, I believe I called the TAP fees. It's actually capacity fees. The good news is, working with Mr. Taylor from Mid-Ohio, the last, about a week ago, actually, this was the previous meeting, so two, two and a half weeks ago, that he recommended to the board that they waive those fees for this building. I had a discussion with him and actually was able to verify that today, that they did waive those fees, which will save us that, that 136,000 additional that we had requested. So instead of the 600,000, we can ask for the lesser amount, which I think if my math is correct, it's 464,000 to continue forth with that building. But that, I agree with Mr. Eads, that was a, a great win today. If I can, while I'm talking, I will talk. Like, that building is continuing to go up. They have a great plan going. You'll see the walls continue to go up. We should be pouring concrete in the next couple of weeks on the, on the floors, and that should allow the, the metal framing to go up and start getting it under roof before winter. That's the goal. So we, again, reduce any other contingency costs that may come out of that. So.
Thank you, Mr. Saltzman, for that update. I'm gonna thank everybody on council. Eyes got wider there when you said we just saved 136,000, and we don't need to dip into our funds any further. The rest of the meeting, we're gonna discuss all of these things as we go tonight, so we'll just leave it for that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brent.
Public Service at 5:00 on the 14th, and Public Safety at 6:00.
All right. Thank you, Rich.
Public Safety meeting, October 14th, 6:00.
Thank you, Andy.
Finance Committee meeting is October 20th, 5:30 in the meeting room next door.
Shannon?
I'll pass. Thanks.
John? Lisa? Onto city official reports.
All right. Well, first thing I want to do is thank everyone for coming out. It was a very packed house today. I want to thank you for, for coming out and saying your piece, if you were for or against it. And the main thing is, I want to thank the younger people that came out and talked about this project. As Mr. Markley said, if you guys have not been to the Park Avenue Basketball Courts and Skate Park, go down there and check that out. Check out Mary Mack. They did do a wonderful job on that. We were happy to be able to get that done before the weather broke on us. So we will be partnering in a canned food drive, October 6th to the 10th, and that'll be with London City Schools and Bridges of Madison County. So if you're able to send non-perishable food items with your child to London City Schools, or you can come and drop them off here at London City Hall at 20 South Walnut Street. This is the Battle of the Cans, and so this coincides with the Battle of 42, and that game is between the London Red Raiders and that team that's from right up north of State Route 42. Last year, both schools brought in over 15,000 items that were used for weekend and after-school stability programs, and then the remaining items were donated to local food pantries. Anything brought here will stay in London. Anything brought to Plain City will stay up in the Plain City area. So this is a great way to help those who need it while having a little friendly competition. And I will say that we did lose the Battle of the Cans last year, so with your help, hopefully this year we can win that, just like how we have won the Mayor's Cup Football Trophy four years in a row now. So please help us out with that. There's a bunch of social media going out. Plain City came and did a pretty fun video with Mayor Carney and myself. If you see it, share it. Let's get the word out and, and get some non-perishable and canned items. City of London will be hosting Pumpkin Palooza in Cowling Park on Saturday, October 11th, from 9:00 to noon. It's backed by popular demand. It was such a successful event last year. We started it last year. Be free pumpkins for the kids, pumpkin pie eating contest, face painting, bounce houses, food trunks. And this year, there's over 30 community partners and vendors. So like, people really wanted to be a part of this thing. So it's a free, family-friendly event, so I hope to see the park packed. I do want to thank the Parks Rec Department as well as our executive assistant, Eve Breedlove, who really put this whole thing together last year and this year, and it's just such a wonderful event. Please remember, Trick or Treat for City of London will be on Thursday, October 30. There is no inclement weather makeup date. So Trick or Treat will happen no matter what the weather is that night, but I do encourage people to attend local Trunk or Treats the day's leading up if you're concerned about the weather on the date. There is a lot of Trunk or Treats going around London. I've already started putting information out on those. If anybody has any information about Trunk or Treats, send it to me. But I would assume there's probably gonna be 10 Trunk or Treats before Halloween. So yeah, if you're scared it's gonna rain, or it looks like it's gonna rain, get to one of them. I know one of them, there's one at 2 to 4, 4 to 6, and 6 to 8, I think, one day on like a Sunday, the Sunday before. And then for the adults, the London 1811 Downtown District Group is gonna host their booze and brews on Friday, October 31st, from 8:00 to 10:00 to help promote the downtown businesses, get that foot traffic we keep talking about. So you can go down and see all the great businesses in the area and then enjoy the new Dora. Get all the information about that on the 1811's Facebook page, and then the London Lions Club is hosting their 21 and over costume party called the Eyeball, and that'll be on October 25th at 7:00 o'clock at the fairgrounds at the Dela Seltzer. You can get more information or purchase tickets for that on their Facebook page. Just a couple other quick events that are coming up this month. LifePoint Family Center will be having their dinner at the Dear Dutchman on October 7. The RCC will be having their Oktoberfest at Massa County Fairgrounds on the 9th. Bonanza, which is a great event hosted by the Massa County Chamber of Commerce, will be held at Lake Chalktall on October 16. I did have the opportunity to have lunch with Congressman Mike Carey, and was able to come and give him a tour of the Police Department Construction Zone. So it was a great conversation, really learned a lot about federal shutdown, which is kinda wild and what's going on right now. But we also got to really talk about poss, the possibility of future, future local funding and some other topics. So I do want to thank him for coming out and his partnership throughout the process of our police department, because as you guys know, he did help us secure $5 million for the, the construction of that. Now onto the fun fact, which is the number two. If you guys remember, Business View Magazine did an article in 2023 in August that featured London, and it was about the growth in central Ohio and how we were kinda strategically positioned and the things we were doing. Well, now they came back and said, hey, we wanna do another article in London, and it's gonna be expanded coverage and continue the spotlight on London, Ohio, and it's about Economic Resilience and Growth series that they're having in, in Ohio. So just kinda neat that they're gonna be doing that again here soon and just highlighting London and all the great things that, you know, us as a team has been able to bring forward and bring to London as we continue to grow London at the right pace and make sure that we have what we need for our citizens as well as bring new citizens in. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve?
So I only have one thing to add. We already talked about the police building. City Logic, that's a sidewalk evaluation project. Contract's been signed with them. We, Bill Long, Street Superintendent, myself, had a online meeting with them, talking about the, the work expectations. They're working on a, a data which basically outlines all the city streets and where they're at, so they have a project to put when they do the evaluation. They'll send that data to us. Once we approve it, then they will schedule the actual work to begin. It looks like right now, we would be next in line. It would be late October, early November when that's done. Initially, talking with the salesperson, said a week, that they're saying it's a three-week project, looking at about 95 miles of sidewalk, give or take. Once that's done, and obviously it's weather-dependent, once that's done, the deliverables would be expected somewhere between five and six weeks after that. And I don't know if we talked about it before, that would, that would be an online where it grades everything. We have videos and pictures also of that. So it still is pushing for weather, and that includes like leaves and things like that, but right now she's hopeful that's, that will be completed by November. So somewhere February-ish, we should be seeing data that we can, we can start using for the evaluation.
Onto old business, up for eighth reading, ordinance 150-25. Got a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 150-25, sponsored by Andrew Hitt. No ordinance authorizing the city to enter into Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council, SOPEC, the execution and delivery of the agreement establishing SOPEC and approving the bylaws of SOPEC.
I'm gonna make a motion that we just reserve any deliberation on this until the end of today's session, as there's another resolution pending on today's agenda that might very well obviate the need to consider this at this time.
So you moved the table this until?
The end of the session, yeah. Whatever, whatever's the best way to get it done. 150-25 and 151-25, if we can just consider those at the end of the agenda for today.
I'll second.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniels?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Ordinance 150-25 and ordinance 151-25. Okay, ordinance one fifty and dash twenty-five, and ordinance one fifty-one dash twenty-five will be moved to the end. Up for sixth reading, Resolution one fifty-nine dash twenty-five, again, motion read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one fifty-nine dash twenty-five, sponsored by Brent McDaniel's, a resolution to abolish the City of London recycling program.
Yeah, will the Safety Service Director have a plan together by the next public service meeting? Well, I guess we'll just leave it on there.
Yeah, we are working on that internally right now, so if you just leave it on. Just leave it on for us, please.
Up for fourth reading, Resolution one eighty dash twenty-five, again, motion read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one eighty dash twenty-five, sponsored by Shannon Traynor, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the Planning Commission, Massa Reserve Project.
Paul, did you have a presentation?
Well, thank you for everyone that showed up tonight. Quite honestly, I didn't expect so much support for the project. I knew some folks said that they were coming to support it, but to get support from folks that I've never seen before, people I've never talked to about before, was very touching and very overwhelming. When this project was first brought to Madison County, to London, I thought, man, this will be the least controversial project that this city's ever seen. I really believed that. I said, who in the world wouldn't want to support workforce housing for our community? I thought my biggest supporter would be the guy immediately across from me, because when we would talk about other projects, he'd say, can the people of London afford this house, meaning their four-hundred-and-fifty, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, nice homes that will do good things for the community, but can our folks afford that with their payroll? So I thought, boy, Greg is going to love this one. I'm not going to read the crystal balls at the Madison County Fair this year, okay? So I got that wrong. But I did think it would be the least controversial thing, because it's so needed for our community. You know, there's two things that people don't like, the way things are and change. Those are the two things that people don't like, the way things are and change. And there's an old saying, that you can please some of the people all the time, all the people some of the time, but you can't please everyone each of the time. So council members, I can appreciate, you know, the challenge you have in having to cast a vote tonight. But the reality is that Planning Commission has passed this by a four-oh unanimous vote. They've looked at all of the issues that have been brought up here, and they voted four-oh to pass this. That's not insignificant. It is not easy to get things through Planning Commission, I can tell you that. They don't just agree to it, they don't rubber stamp it, they have requirements. They have strict requirements. They make things non-negotiable. I'll say, for instance, there was an argument for the street to be twenty-seven feet wide. They said, no, you're not going to have a twenty-seven-foot-wide street, you're going to have thirty-one feet-wide streets, because we have to manage traffic. The chief of police, or I'm sorry, the chief of the fire department was there, Safety Service was there, the mayor was there, and they said, you're going to have to go to thirty-one feet. That's it. That's what we're telling you. You can push, you can argue. Wes was giving example of town after town, all over central Ohio, that had the twenty-seven-foot standard. And I was told, I don't care, you're going to have thirty-one-foot streets, because we have to manage the traffic. So for anyone who thinks that it's easy to get through Planning Commission, it is not, okay? And there are lots of things that happen before it gets voted on and before it comes to you. I think that's important to note. Planning Commission has voted for it. Tonight, we're asking for your vote to support what Planning Commission has agreed to. But I'd like to give you some context before we get deep into that. Before we ever went before Planning Commission, myself, my three kids here, and the one who is currently deployed to Guantanamo, or Quanico, you know, Freudian slip there, little difference, he was with the president on Monday, I'll put it that way, okay? That was Quanico. But we all went door-to-door. We knocked at every house that we thought was within a reasonable radius, and invited them to the Butcher Block with a plan, with a proposal that we thought was responsible, with a plan and proposal that, by the way, would have been the most profitable for so people that cast dispersions and have a disdain for profit, right? We forewent profit to listen to our neighbors. We incorporated changes from that meeting, not little changes, big changes. This project, for instance, was going to go out to Andrew Court. It was planned that way. The city planned that back when Andrew Court was put in. There's a road that continues into my property. That wasn't my plan, that was the plan back when Andrew Court was built. We could have used Sharp Avenue. People in that neighborhood, including my friend Tara, and Tara is my friend, we go to church together, and I don't care if we have a difference on this, I look forward to seeing her every Sunday morning, okay? And so there was a plan to use Sharp Avenue. People said Sharp Avenue's too narrow, Sharp Avenue's too this, Sharp Avenue's, you know, not in good shape. So we re-engineered all of the plans to incorporate as much of the feedback as we could. Now, you can't please all the people all the time. You heard that testimony here this evening. You've heard that testimony along the way. But you also heard seventy-six percent of the people who showed up tonight speak in favor of this project. That's pretty unbelievable. I'm proud of that, and I thank those of you who came and spoke on behalf of the project. I thank those who came and shared their feedback that weren't in favor of the project. When we were talking about this, and there's all kinds of ironic coincidence, when we talked about this with the neighbors, the neighbors would say, I don't want someone backing their backyard to back up to my backyard. So we added green space, so that there was separation. That green space is between twenty-foot and eighty-foot that we gave to consider, out of considerations to our neighbors, okay? So I had, I had, I don't remember all these names, so I got to use my cheat sheet. At my meeting, Brandy Lyons, are you still here, Brandy? Okay. Brandy Lyons spoke about the tree that was planted in her backyard, that with my plan would have gone away. It's my tree, it's my land, it would have gone away. She's like, I lost my dad when I was eighteen. That tree was planted in memoriam of my dad. I work from home. I can't have that road coming by, because I have four dogs in my house. We literally changed the entire plan because of the people on Andrew Court, and particularly because of Brandy Lyons and the tree that we wanted to save, and the fact that we wanted to give her some solace in that back corner. Her mother is blind, lives next to her, okay? So we have done so much to accommodate and incorporate changes for our neighbors, because I am from here. And I don't give a damn what you read on Facebook. I always say, you talk to me about something I've done to wrong you, and we'll have a discussion about that, and if I've done something wrong, I'll apologize for it. But by and large, I can tell you that the people I work with and the people I know say, this is a person of his word, and he does what he said he's going to do. So people in that same audience said, these homes are too affordable, and we are afraid that big commercial landlords are going to come in and buy up all these homes, because they're too affordable, and you can make a profit renting them out for more than what the mortgage payment would be. And so we don't like the plan, because the homes are too affordable. Said, okay, that's interesting, particularly when some of those people today say, are they affordable enough? Okay? So circumstances change, the people's, the circumstances haven't changed, their opinions have. So I talked to the builder, and I called Michael, and I said, Michael, could we deed restrict this, so that you don't ever sell more than three homes to one person or one entity? And the reason for three is so that families like Brandy's could live right next door to one another, their mom and dad and so forth. Will you agree to not sell more than three homes to any one person or entity, so that we don't have this become a rental community? He said, you know what, we don't want that either, we'll agree to that deed restriction. Some of the larger homes, that Senator Reynolds said is what we should be thinking about to be proactive in dealing with this, they said, we don't want a home taller than us and towering down on us. So we changed the site plan, so that those homes would only be out by the railroad tracks, or that they would never be next to one of the adjoining homes that are already built. We eliminated the access to Sharp Avenue. We eliminated the roadway access to Andrew Court, to make sure that the traffic, okay, that the traffic doesn't go through their neighborhoods. So we've got to talk about traffic for a minute. If you think the traffic is a bad thing, take a trip to Springfield, Ohio, or take a trip to Mount Sterling, Ohio. Dying towns don't have traffic. So be careful what you ask for. Dying towns do not have traffic. I was speaking to one council member, and I said, hey, you know what, I have figured out a way. My other friend, Ms. Ames, right, and I've known Teresa as long as I've been here, think the world of her, respect her, and I understand her perspective, but I remember in our first, our first meeting, before all this happened, you know, not before this happened, but in the course of the first meeting at the Butcher Block, she talked about being unable to get out of her road, out of her driveway, onto the road, because she lives on a state route. I live on a state route, too, and so some days, you know what, you live on a state highway, that's where we drive our traffic. And I'm not being empathetic with that, but I said to this individual, I said, I know how to fix the traffic problem on one forty-two. If you ever go there when Stanley's coming to work, or the workers are leaving work, it backs traffic up. I said, you know, if we shut Stanley down, we won't have that traffic on one forty-two, we won't have it. What a brilliant plan, except people won't have jobs, the city won't have income tax. So we have to look at traffic through a constructive lens of saying, traffic is a good thing. There's not a business owner in this entire community that doesn't want traffic at their business. There isn't one. There isn't one business owner. I don't care if you're a veterinarian, I don't care if you own a pizza shop, I don't care if you own the Butcher Block, I don't care if you're running a real estate company, I don't care if you've got a movie theater. Everybody wants and needs traffic, okay? Now, controlling that traffic, you do by putting in thirty-one-foot streets, which wasn't an option, it was an ultimatum. It was an ultimatum. And my buddy Wes wasn't going to let go, and I said, Wes, drop that bone, okay? Drop that bone, because this is not negotiable. We have got to be thoughtful about how we manage that. Is it ever going to be perfect? It's, you know, listen, Lafayette Street isn't perfect today. Do we want fewer, do we want fewer people shopping at our businesses today? I don't think so. So let's not be hateful towards traffic. We talked about green space. We've added green space. Right now, this plan is not only compliant, you know, we've got, on Monday, there's lots of Monday-morning quarterbacks that can coach the Buckeyes better than Ryan Day, right? It's easy to do, lots of Monday-morning quarterbacks. In this process, I've heard lots of legal experts get up here, but they don't have a law degree. I've heard lots of people get up here and talk about civil engineering, but they don't have a civil engineering license, right? The reality is, there is a code, a zoning code, for how much green space needs to be in this development. And the answer to that is twenty percent. We have twenty-seven percent. We have thirty-five percent more green space than what is required by code. So it is absurd to talk about adding more green space, when we are thirty-five percent higher than the already zoning requirement. So I've heard, it's this far from a park, and it's this many minutes to a library. Are we going to build a new library right next to these folks, so that they don't have to go to the library? And we omit the parks that are right down the street? There's not another development in this community that's required to have a park. That wasn't brought up tonight, but it's been brought up throughout this process, so I want to address it. There isn't one. Johnson's Creek isn't required to, Eagleton, Margate, there's not one. London Landing, that's not the standard. We invest in our parks, so that the people can go to them. I live farther from Cowling Park than Shannon does, but that just means I have to get in my car and drive there. And we did so gladly for all of our kids throughout the years, and I never thought it to be an imposition. In fact, I'd rather live a little bit farther from it than what she does, because I probably don't want the traffic that's associated with having a park in your yard. So as I continue to talk about the concessions, we have thirty-five percent more green space than what's required under code. I talked to another individual that was concerned, and I think this is a legitimate concern, I never thought of it. And so there's a saying out there, that none of us are as smart as all of us. And so you try to listen to the things that you see. And they said, with these houses being close together, I'm worried about fireworks. And so we are putting in an HOA restriction that says that there will be no commercial-grade fireworks in that community, so that we eliminate that hazard that could otherwise be there. When we go back to the green space, there is over six thousand eighty continuous walkable area in this. Anyone know how long that is? That's well over a mile of continuous walkable green space. So don't talk to me about not having enough room to walk your dog, not being able to play catch, not being able to play frisbee. It is a substantial amount of space that is there. Now, I've given a package to each of you that shows the changes that I've talked about here this evening, and you will see where we've made accommodations. You will see where we started out. And these are called preliminary plans for a reason, because none of us have all the answers. And I think it's important to talk to your neighbors. At that Butcher Block meeting, before it ever got to Planning Commission, we had forty to fifty people in attendance. The meeting went for two hours. I mean, it was as long as today's public feedback was, right? It was an extensive meeting. And I thought, I don't know if we're going to be able to do this. I don't know if we're going to be able to do that. We went back to the civil engineers, at the cost of tens of thousands of dollars, and we got them to make the modifications that, in large part, addressed those issues. Our plan then came to, and this is what's passed Planning Commission, and what you'll be asked to vote on today, to two-hundred-and-seventy-one lots. Now, I know there's lots of opinions about what size my lot should be, or what size, what color my car should be, but there is a limit, frankly, as to what council's role is in deciding whether or not a lot should be X, Y, or Z. It should be consistent with and abide by the current zoning code. We shouldn't pick the color of the house for these people that are moving in. I think the people that are moving in ought to be able to pick their lot size, and by the way, there's lots of different options inside of this. We always gravitate to the smallest lot, and try to replicate that and say, every lot's the same size. That's simply not true. We shouldn't pick their lot size, we should make sure that the lot size is consistent with the current zoning code. And finally, you know, and I do think it's just as absurd to pick the color of their home, right? Like, we've got to make sure that this is a net good for the community. So I'm going to come back to that map in a minute. But when we talk about the net good of the community, on the very front page of your packet, you're going to see where this project delivers for this community a net benefit of ten million, six-hundred thousand dollars over a ten-year period, or over a million dollars a year. Now, admittedly, I have included in that the monies that go to the city, and the monies that go to the schools, because those are the two things that people look at most keenly. There's money that go to the other entities, like the county, but I didn't figure any of you would be here voting on what happens to the county with respect to this. But over a million dollars a year. And so when it said that there will be more demand than there is income, that is absurd. It is financially absurd, and if you believe that, you need a better education or a calculator with batteries. It is why we end up with a thirty-seven-trillion-dollar debt at the federal basis, and, you know, think of the absurdity of the government shutdown that was referenced earlier. What's the shutdown over? Agreeing on a spending limit or a spending cap. What do we want to agree on the spending cap? We want to spend trillions more, right? It's not about, we don't agree with the cuts, it's about, we all want to agree to what our PEC projects are. But a million dollars a year in net revenue is accretive to the city budget. The city has tried to pass levies four different times, with the same result. With the same result, it gets voted down. And the notion that, one, you arbitrarily have the right to increase taxes, you don't, you need the support of the voters to increase taxes. So it's not like this is city council doing it, or the mayor doing it, or anybody else doing that. doing that. It is voted on by the citizens. The citizens have spoken. They're not going to vote for your levy, okay? It's, Madison Plains can put another levy on, but they're not going to vote for Madison Plains levy either. All you've got to do is look at those statistics. $1 million in new revenue between the schools and the city. You won't see a better benefit. So you've got to grow your base or increase your rate. So I heard, and, and I'm pretty good at listening, I heard testimony today that property values went up by 27% in Union County, and it was called a tax increase. Property values went up by 27% in Union County, and it was referred to as a tax increase. That's like saying you bought Intel at 20 bucks and you're pissed off today that it's at 35, because now when you sell, you're going to have, have to pay capital gains on your gain. When your home goes up in value, that is a wonderful thing. The reason that these homeowners should not be deprived of the opportunity to having a workforce housing attainable living solution is, when you own a home, it appreciates. When you own a home, it appreciates, and that is a good thing. And if you don't like the appreciation in value, then you're arguing you want to see your home values go down. That's a dumb thing. And what I will say with respect to the homes appreciating, when you're a first-time homebuyer, which this is really targeted to, for those teachers, those policemen, those policewomen, the people at Stanley, the people that work in West Jefferson at all of those factories that are going to give you their income tax and then go out to West Jefferson and work, when those people give you that income tax, okay, the city wins. There's no way to color that as if though it's not accretive. When their home goes up in value, they win. When they live in an apartment instead of a home, there's no appreciation. And there's been a lot of banter about who says that, you know, that, that, that they won't be able to, treating it like government housing. Who says that Arbor Homes won't be able to change the price at some point in time in the future if their costs doubled, like we saw during COVID? Nobody says that. The market says that. But let me tell you the reality. The average rent in this town is $1,600 a month, and there isn't a darn thing in the world that's preventing that landlord from saying, you know what? My place is full. I'm going to raise your rent, Mr. Hayes, to $1,750. Let's think about the person that now can step into this home for less than what they're paying in rent and appreciate and increase in, in home value over time. So when we talked about the general fund going up by 7.6%, let's take a step back. Let's take a deep breath, and let's check our calculators out. What's happened in this town that would increase revenue by 7.6% in the general fund? London Landing, Sovereign Village, those are the two changes to your town. When, when we did London Landing, I put together an estimate much like this one here, and I said, this is how much it's going to generate in new taxes. And you know what? I was wrong. It's generated more in new taxes than what I estimated. So the projects like Sovereign Village, the projects like London Landing are not draining the city's resources, they're adding to the city's resources. This is a simple question of math. So I, I've paid attention as I sit through these meetings. At the last meeting, there was lots of talk about dilapidated sidewalks. What we're not talking about tonight is the adjoining properties, like where Tara lives, there are no sidewalks. There aren't no sidewalks. So it is such a crock to say that this brand-new development with 31-foot streets, brand-new sidewalks that aren't busted up and are brand-new in impeccable shape, it's going to be a dangerous hazard. I heard someone tonight say, oh, those retention ponds, they're dangerous, they're steep, someone's going to fall in it. I was on Graceland Avenue a week ago. I was out looking at my project. My adjoining neighbor ran into me, and he said, Paul Gross, I want to tell you something. And I never would have guessed, I don't know his name, I know where he lives, I don't know his name. He said, I've lived here for 40 years. I wasn't in support of this project. And what I can tell you is, this, you are the best thing that has happened to me in the 40 years that I live here. And I tried to knock on his door a couple times to try to get him to give you that testimony here tonight, right? But when I talk to the, when I talk to the folks at Stanley, they say, this is exactly what we need for our workforce. When I talk to the folks at Nissan, Michael say, this is exactly what we need for our company to have a solid employment base. We need diversity in housing. We need houses on the high end. We need houses on the low end. We need houses in the middle. We need this. I don't understand why it's controversial. I do understand why it's emotional, right? Because it is change in someone's backyard, Tara's backyard, to a lesser extent, Teresa's backyard. I get that. But there's a difference between emotions and logic. And to some extent, and please don't take this too personally, it's damn selfish to say, I don't want anything in my backyard. I want to show a board, Wes, if you'll pull that up, I want to show a, a board of the strategic nature of how we've laid Madison Reserve out to be a net accretive value to this community. If you look at where London Landing is, and you look at where Sovereign Village is, it is on Highway 56. If you look at where Johnson's Creek is, it is on Highway 38 and Highway 42 in between the two. If you look at where this is, it's on 142, which hasn't seen any meaningful growth since Moby Dick's been a minnow. So we can't look at open, we can't look at open fields in an area where there hasn't been any growth forever and say, we don't want it here, push it to the other side of town. We don't care about the employers of this community. We don't want traffic. I don't care about the businesses of this community. I don't want them to have customers. Businesses need customers. Employers need employees. The city needs revenue, and this delivers on all three of those. The math is simple. The plan meets the current code. It's passed a very stringent process. We've got other boards that show the things that I've shared with you here, so we won't go through all of that. But when you look at the density, and, and the density is the last thing I'm going to talk about, and Wes, I'm going to need you to bring that board closer to me for density, please. Let's talk about the facts of density. Okay? I am not tone deaf. I have heard almost every single person up at your table talk about density. I think you're wrong. But I think you have the right to be wrong because you've been elected by the city, by the, by, by, by the peers in this city. And so I, I, Mr. Hayes, Councilman Hayes asked two weeks, two meetings ago, is there something you can do about density? And I replied, not without giving up the affordability. And silly people will say, let's ignore the math and say, that's about profits. No, it's about the practical nature of understanding how to run a calculator. Okay? I'm not doing it to lose money. I can promise you that. I am going to ask that it be profitable or, or design it so that it is profitable, but it's got to be practical as well. So when, when Councilman Hayes said, is there anything you can do? I said, not without giving up that affordability. When I heard Councilman Hitt, Councilman Traynor all say, hey, can you do anything about this density? I thought, you know what? We, we better go back to the drawing board, because everyone seems to think that we need to do something here. So we've got a plan that you're going to be asked to vote on tonight that approves 271 homes as it's presented by Planning Commission. And because of all of your voices, the preliminary development plan is at 271. The final development plan that I submitted to Planning Commission is at 245 homes, almost 30 fewer homes inside of that subdivision. So the numbers I'm going to give you now, the, the numbers I'm going to give you now are to compare that with the exact surrounding lots. So that's 4.45 acres with the reduced number of lots. If I look at East Gate subdivision, they're at 4.5. So fewer homes per acre than East Gate. A few more than the Buckingham Place subdivision, they're at 3.6, we're at 4.45. If we look across the street, and I mean almost immediately across the street, they're at 4.25. If I look at London Village where Mr. Hayes lives, it's at 4.45, identical to what we're proposing here. If you look at Hyde Park, it's at 5.4. So substantially less dense than Hyde Park. So is it identical, other than London Village, and, and, you know, that, that's the one it's identical to? But it's comparable. It's good for the community. It's good for the people who can't afford a home and are living in an apartment. It's good for Madison County. It's good for this city. It's good for the finances. It's good for the schools. It's not controversial. Is it emotional? It's emotional, because someone's changing your backyard in some cases. But I can promise you, as God is my witness, we've worked as hard as anyone will ever work to take into consideration the needs and the interests of the neighbors, not because we had to, but because that's the right thing to do. And I feel like, for doing the right thing, people would say, well, you added green space, but you, you, you lowered the lot. Yeah, you, you know why the lot changed? Because you asked me not to back it up to your backyard, so I didn't back it up to your backyard. Now, the only way we could do that is by working with the home builder and saying, hey, we've got to change the mix. We've got to change the design. And with that said, we've tried to do everything under the sun to make this as nice for London as every other project that I've ever done, whether that be the Butcher Block, the Bluebird, Sovereign Village, London Landing, Johnson's Creek, or anything else that I've touched since I've been working in this community. So with that said, I ask for what I hope is your unanimous support for this project tonight. Couple people brought up legal issues. I've got a lawyer in the house to address the legal issues, and she only specializes, this is her exact specialty. So Laura Komek is behind me. Wes is a civil engineer by training, so with all due respect, I think the legal issues and the civil engineering issues belong on their plates. And with that, I'm going to hand the mic to whomever council directs. If you've got a legal or engineering issue, or if you've got something for me, let me know. And I do have the builder here, and he does want to talk about his product, and I think you'll be interested in his project.
Real quick question, Mr. Gross. One of our people tonight, I believe it was Ms. Woods, Liz Woods, asked for something like a fence around the area. What would you do about that?
Well, right now, what we've got, as, as Ms. Woods' previous discussion, you know, she's, she's been consistent in saying, I don't want, she's got a large, long lot along 42. Not consistent or compatible with any products there. In fact, there's a shared driveway where two, one driveway goes in to serve two homes, and so it, it's, so I don't, right tonight, it, you know, I, I would, I would submit this. I will continue to demonstrate that I'm going to work with neighbors, as I've done in the past, but I won't be able to satisfy every single person's request. The last time we talked, we talked about building a, you know, planting a bunch of trees and, and putting in a row of trees and having some green space there. And so we've changed the whole engineering plan to put that in. And, you know, her concern was, these people are going to trespass. That's not a real practical concern. I, I would tell you that when, when I was going through this, Matt Daley, who's been at every one of these meetings, would tell me that he watches the fireworks from my moat yard that sits next to his home. That's trespassing. I don't think Matt's going to do that when there's new homes there, like that, that there's just a difference in behavior. But I'm certainly not opposed to having a conversation with her about what that looks like, but past conversations have led to the current design, which has been some green space with, with evergreens and things of that nature coming in to serve that. But I will tell you, to get to the 245, some of the lots are bigger, and where her house is, we've added the bigger lots.
Any questions?
Oh, sure. So I, I've, I've looked at your economic benefit here, which was new to us tonight. We haven't seen that before. We walked in tonight. Couple things that I'm going to bring up on this, and I'll, and I'll just run through, if you want to sit down for a minute, give me a few minutes. Just a couple things that came up. The economic benefit, we can only be concerned about what, how it's going to benefit London, which is the 401,000, not the $1 million. We just need to worry about London. It's great that it'll benefit the school also, but our part's $401,000. And there's an assumption here that there's a 1% income tax that's going to generate almost $187,000. The flaw of that argument is, if this is made, or if these properties are going to be sold to people that already work here, we don't gain a benefit from those people because we're already collecting their income tax now. So even though it's $187,000 that you can attribute to that, it really won't increase by that much.
May I, may I just challenge that assertion, please, Mr. Eads? The, the assertion that this person is living out in the field, right? We know that's not happening. So they're, they're somewhere, okay? We don't know if they're working at Stanley, or if they're for future hires at Stanley, but let's suppose they're living in an apartment, and then they go move to this place. They've vacated a place, if they're already living here, they've vacated a place that someone else is going to move in, and that is going to open that up. So all I would say is, if you want any credibility, look at the first spreadsheet I had for London Landing, which you also took exception to, and look at how much it's lined up and how I've actually been very conservative and exceeded that. So the second, the second part of that is, you'll use math that says, hey, the lowest selling house here, the person can get qualified at $50,000 a year, or a $50,000 household, but maybe there's a $130,000 household that's not in there. So yes, these are estimates, but there's a terrific track record that I'll put on anything that gets into the numbers, but that person doesn't live there, so if they're moving, they're freeing up a house, like, it, it, it's, it's a, it's a silly circular argument, but go ahead.
Okay. Thanks for trying to invalidate my argument. So that argument still is the fact, London Landing, you presented, we're bringing new people into London. So that was all new income. We expected that. But this has been presented as workforce attainable, and the workforce that was targeted in our discussions was people that are here now. So, so I...
No, Mr. Eads, I'm, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to be clear for the record, because it's that kind of nonsense where people take things out of context that is really offensive, okay? And it's not fair to the citizens that you serve. So, but, but, just a minute.
I think you're taking this out of context.
No, no, no. You just, you just said, it's on the record, it's recorded. You just said that I presented with London Landing that the people weren't going to be from here. I never presented that. We didn't sell the first house at London Landing. I wouldn't have any way to forecast where those people were coming from. The only thing I could project at London Landing before we ever had anything other than a blank field was what the income level would be and what the number of houses would be. And yes, that's what I presented. I didn't present that they were going to be from Hilliard. I didn't present that. And if people work in London today and live in Hilliard, they come with their spouse. Their spouse maybe doesn't work here today. So it's, it's got to be a fair and objective discussion to get to a reasonable financial outcome.
Thank you. Mr. President, I ask to be able to finish my statements.
You said they were questions, with all due respect.
Well, then I'll finish my statements. So, so I, so I don't think that that number is a true number, and I understand that there is, that there is a discussion to be had about that. I don't have a problem with that. The, the next thing that's listed on here is the new community authority with safety services generating $43,631. Now, that, I don't know if council is aware, but Mr. Gross came to my office to discuss this. We did discuss whether the new community authority would be utilized for this. And, you know, as far as I could tell, that would be allowable, because a new community authority can bring in new properties. My question now is, if it's under separate and different ownership, can you still do that? I don't know that. This is just new information tonight. I didn't know that were going to be true. So, you know, I think that's a question that maybe we have to ask, because if the ownership's not yours, if it is, Gross's point is a whole different set of people, can this be brought into a new community authority? I don't know that answer. So that, that was a question I had. And then you were, you were talking about, so I'm just going to delve into a couple other things, and then I'll be quiet. So you talk about the, the, the density, and we, from the first day that I spoke to you and I spoke to Mr. Coglan, I said the density was my issue. The number that you had at that point was 4.9 at that point, based on 271 houses. But we're taking 12 acres out of this because that's your green space. So the actual density for the part that you're going to use is 6.3. It's not 4.9. And I do agree with Mr. Daley that what I had read, that the utility easements cannot be used for green space unless that's been approved by... be used for green space unless that's been approved by the planning commission. I didn't see anything on that plan that said that. And then when we talk about the square footage of the lots again, I actually did the spreadsheet, went through, figured them all out, based on what we have in front of us, the 271, with that map that was provided to us, or that outline that was provided. The average square foot was 5352, but the median was 4773 for the square footage of the lots. And that, there was 220 homes that were under 5625. That was the number that we were going to use, was 5625. When you say there's, when you say that there's zoning and there's codes, well, they can give, the planning commission can give the 25%. The next 25% is based upon houses being low to moderate, or, you know, low to moderate price, I think was how that was stated. But I have no idea what that means, what low to moderate pricing is, and that's going to be a question for the planning commission, I believe, to bring that up itself. So these are, these are the things that I, that I have brought up, that I've discussed with you, I've discussed here in council. It's not anything new in my discussions here. I do say I appreciate the fact that you do try to work with the people around there, and you've made concessions, and I think that's a good thing. And do I want to see a, do I want to see housing for your daughter, your children, my children, grandchildren? I certainly do. But I still have the objection on the lot sizes, and that's not going to go away for me. Thank you.
Okay, so you did say that it was a question about the new community authority. We did check with Rick or Graydon before we proposed this or put it down on paper. As you know, the new community authority is its own governmental entity. We actually brought this up during that meeting, that there would be a new project. The ownership change does not affect that, so it can be brought into the NCA, which means that there will be at least $43,631 that will go to police and fire. And, you know, that's, you know, we, in recent meetings, there's been discussion about the fire station, right? We're getting a new police station, but the state of the existing fire station. What does it take to get a new, you know, make repairs and do all that? It takes new money, new sources of money. This is that new source of money. Same for the sidewalks, right? Like, it is a new source of money that gives you options to address things that are, so this isn't going to hurt your infrastructure, it's going to help your infrastructure. But the NCA does fit into that. And, you know, I can talk to you about the, you know, the interesting thing, Councilman Eads, is the green space calculation for every single site I selected is calculated the same way. It's calculated, any real estate professional, anyone with knowledge and experience in this calculates it's one way. How many acres do you have? How many houses are on those acres? And then you get your density. So when we used, we didn't have two standards, we had one standard. When we looked at London Village, Hyde Park, Kensington, Buckingham Place, Eastgate subdivision, same calculation. So if you want to say, for London, Ohio, we're going to change the calculation that is commonly used by every civil engineer that I've ever worked with or been in the employment of, you can do that for London, Ohio. But that's not how it's done, nor is the comparison that I've given you calculated the way you're calculating it. So that's just.
Calculating it, how the city calculates it. The density is calculated as per the city code.
Are there any other legal questions that were in that that you'd like Laura to address?
No, the biggest legal question was the new community authority. Any other questions? I do have a couple of questions for the planning commission. So, and I believe Councilman Trainer is going to, Councilwoman Trainer is going to help answer a few of my questions that I had posed. So I had posed the question before, whether or not this was a valid application, because the words planned unit development were nowhere on there. I thought we were going to get an update on that tonight. Why that's not on there, because that was, that was the question that I had, that if the application wasn't valid, then we would have to vote that down. And Mr. Mayor, I know you're on the planning commission.
Yeah, Chrissy's here. She's going to speak about that. This is Chrissy West with our building department.
Thank you. So like Mayor Koster said, I'm Chrissy West. I work for the Department of Development, which is your contracted building department for the City of London. So as far as that goes, for explanation for council, this is a fairly new software that, at the time, was designed for the entire county, for all of the processes that we go through. So once this application that we're referring to, once he made application, in the online portal, he picked the only choice that he could. So we had other reviews, we had different options that didn't apply or worded correctly. Once that was brought to our attention, we went ahead, we fixed that part of the application. But when this application came in, it was never anything other than the interpretation of staff. We understood it to be the request for a PUD. It was reviewed as a PUD. It was advertised as a PUD to the public, and it was presented as a PUD to the planning It was never, the rezoning or planning plan was never a request for the plat for clarification. So for any confusion that this has caused, the office certainly does apologize. But if you have any questions.
No, thank you. I'm glad that's been cleared up. That was one problem. Then Mr. Mayor, or shall we say, Mr. Planning Commission Chairman? The question that I'd asked, and I believe Councilman Trainer answered this also, is could, could we amend the recommendation of the planning commission, or is this simply a yes or no vote, based on what that is, which is the 271 properties that was presented that had been changed from the original application of 255? So I believe, Ms. Trainer, that's where we're at with this, that we can amend this or accept this as it was brought to us by the planning commission on the recommendation?
I believe if we've got somebody else's opinion here, but it's certainly contemplated for in the ordinances governing PUDs, that the city council purview is to amend as presented or to request modifications.
And that's based on our codified ordinances, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we can accept that? Thank you. Then are there any, any rules or other documents that determine what is low to moderately priced homes for the planning commission? How do we know what that is?
I will tell you that you sent an email to the law director, correct?
I did.
With all these questions?
I did.
Addressed to the law director?
I did.
And she said that she spoke to you?
I didn't get a response on these. These questions, I did not get a response on.
I, I've received the email that you sent to her, and she said that she had, you had already asked those questions, and she had given you those answers. And so I'm not going to make a legal statement. I think these are legal questions, and I'm not going to make the legal statement.
So you don't, you don't have any rules or documents that indicate what is to be determining?
I think you're asking a legal question for legal, and as the mayor and not a lawyer, I am not going to make a legal statement.
Well, no, I'm just asking the chairman of the planning commission on what you base that decision to say these are low to moderately priced houses.
I could tell you personally, as a person, she explained it to a T of the way that we think, when she got up here and spoke. And the math equation that she gave is pretty much the same mindset that I have as a person, not as a mayor, not as planning commission, but when somebody asked me about low to moderate or where you would come up with that number, pretty much exactly what she said. You try to figure out what the median income is, and she did, she did a lot more depth than I did. But what can people afford with median incomes? And that's where we come up with that.
Well, anytime you're dealing with what is considered a low to moderate is going to be a community standard, that is going to change widely depending on your community. And I think that what is a low to moderate housing, all of us in this room are capable of answering that to some degree, based on our own personal experiences, our personal incomes, and our, our knowledge of the area. There is, there's not going to be some document or some rule that you can point to that, that is the collective knowledge of this hive.
And I agree, because, and it's always changing, right? It's always changing. So I don't believe there's any legal thing that the city has. I don't want to answer that for sure, because it's always changing, and it's an interpretation.
I get, I get that.
Is the applicant, is the applicant, Mr. Councilman? I'd like to address that, okay? So is the applicant, we have to say that this is low to moderate, and we have to demonstrate why it's low to moderate, right? So I think Ms. Dillian, who's got more experience than anybody in this room in terms of selling real estate, having, okay? Well, Lisa's a great example, but that's, that's pretty good testimony. The fact that Aaron Miller, which closes every house in this area and sits on planning commission, if you think that you or I know more than Aaron Miller that gets to see every transaction come across his desk, that's pretty good. But here's a good way to look at it. These are $230,000 homes. Where else can you buy a brand new home in this city for $230,000? In this county, in this city? Where else can you buy a brand new home for $230,000? The answer is, they don't exist. Now, I can tell you where you can buy a $371,000 home by the same builder. Now, isn't that coincidental? $371,000 in London Landing, $230,000 here? Because they've changed the density, they've changed the lot type, and it is low to moderate income by any reasonable standard. So like, this is, this is almost an IQ test of like, what the definition of is is. They're building $371,000 homes on 56. They're going to build $230,000 homes on Highway 142, same builder, same town. And the other builders, by the way, are D.R. Horton, which are selling $450,000 homes, and MI's coming at $650,000 homes. And there's no other alternative, not another new alternative anywhere in the city or the county for $230,000. If that doesn't meet the definition of low, what meets the definition of low? We have to apply common sense. And for the record, it is planning commission's determination, not council's, as to whether it meets the low to medium income. And when they voted 4-0, they made the determination. They made the determination. That's settled. That's, that's the way the code is. That's how the law is.
Okay, so council makes a recommendation that, pardon me, the planning commission makes a recommendation to council, the council has to approve. I believe that legally.
That's right. You're exactly right. You're, they made the recommendation, they made that determination tonight. You get to vote on it, and you can vote it up, you can vote it down.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Planning Commission Chairman, part of this is also that there was an additional amount of square footage from 5625. That is your first 25% you're allowed to go below R3, that's 5625. And you can go below that, up to 25% based on the developer, or based on at least that many homes being within that low to moderate range, right? So if we do that, what if, so we know, and I'm not trying to argue this point, Mr. Gross, when you started out, you know, at London Landing, it was from the mid 250s, and now it says from the high, and you're saying it's 371. These prices increased, we know that. I'm not trying to argue that point at all. But at some point, if this doesn't meet that requirement of low to moderately priced homes, because people make their own choices, I understand that, but is there a clawback or is there a penalty to that, that it didn't hit that 25% that we're giving? This is what council is agreeing to give, is the additional, up to the additional 25%. So that, that's why I'm asking the planning commission that part.
Yeah. Members of council, my name is Laura Komek. I'm a development lawyer. I'm just reading from your own code, sir, and the answer is no. The answer has been determined, right? The answer has been determined by a planning commission. The overwhelming facts and evidence presented to you this evening is that you're not going to find a cheaper house anywhere in this county. So I'm reading what your own code says, and you're questioning your own code. Your staff is not questioning the code, and neither is your planning commission. So the answer is no to your question.
And then, did you have a question about lot size? Is that what you were talking about?
Well, that's the 25%.
Yeah, well, if you go to your emails.
The additional 25%.
I think if you go to your emails from September 4th, you asked this question, and Raquel sent you an answer on that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But that didn't answer whether or not there is clawback or penalty if it's not, that's not, stays, if that doesn't stay in place. But, you know, evidently, we have an answer about that tonight.
My name is Michael Marinangeli. I'm the division president for Arbor Homes, and I think from a market, there's, there's a lot of things that have been discussed as it relates to the price of the home. Market will drive the price in the economy. And in our situation, we've brought forward a product that is what we consider to be an attainable product, and it's, it's a product that we know is needed in the marketplace. Our realtors would, would speak to that and did it so eloquently tonight. I was going to speak on the same, same parameters of what we look at, and your numbers were right on point. I had 48 to 65,000 is what a base income would be, a household combined income for somebody to get in. If you just look at that factor alone, from an income standpoint, it should, it should, it should tell you a little bit about affordability and the market that we're trying to hit in terms of affordability. As a company, one of the things that we state as a mission is to get as many people in homes that otherwise could not afford to do so. We've done that successfully with 134 folks that have closed on homes and another 30 that will close on homes here in London. And we feel strong that this product will hit a price point that nobody else is hitting, and that we build a product that will stand the test of time. We've accommodated many things along the way in terms of restrictions and those kind of things that would help satisfy the needs of what the constituents were saying. So I think when it, when we're trying to nail down what is the price and what is the penalty, market drives price, and the market drives what affordability is. We only have so much control over cost over time, but we can say that this product will continue to be the price leader than what anybody else is doing. And I will tell you, as we've gone around to Fairfield County, Logan County, Delaware County, Pickaway, and Knox, we've received, because we do our own development work as well, we've received open arms towards this kind of product and heard overwhelmingly from every one of those counties that we've talked to, that they want this kind of housing, that it's needed in their areas. So I can tell you that that is something that we're proactively looking at, and this could be the product that we build more of as we look into the future. And that suits our why. From a price standpoint, I can't predict what the market's going to do two years, three years from now, but I can say, this product is going to meet that first-time home buyer better than anybody else is doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just add to that. I believe, well, myself for sure on planning commission, but I believe the other three members who did vote this 4-0 to come here, we keep talking about what's the clawback, right? And we felt that this wasn't obtainable, right? And this was the low to moderate, the obtainable housing. Like he just spoke about, none of us have a crystal ball, right? Obtainable pre-COVID and post-COVID was a little bit different, wasn't it? Right? We just don't know what's going to happen. What I can base it on myself is, what I feel personally is obtainable, and in that price range, and also what these companies have done so far in the City of London, right? I used to have a real nice field next to my house, too. I was at the end of a road, and now there's 161 homes and probably, you know, whatever, 100 more coming. But I know what they've done out there. So you also got to put a little bit of trust in who you're working with, and they have not done us wrong. And Paul and I both know how Facebook is, but Paul has never done me wrong. And Paul and I both know how Facebook is, but, um, Paul has never done me wrong and he has brought good products, he's done what he said, he goes out. I can tell you that we've had other people come in and look at projects, none of them go door to door, none of them talk to people and say, wha, what can we do? How can we change this? How can we make it better? So you got to put a little bit of trust in what they're saying they're going to do, right? But also, we don't have a crystal ball and we don't know what the market's going to do, but I believe that those products are going to be the obtainable housing that they're going, that we speak about and that we're looking at. Anything else?
No, sir.
I didn't plan to say this at all, but, but I think listening to Mr. Eads' talk, it, it's fair for me to share it. Now, I, I don't really care how you vote, honestly. But I own some property around here and three bedroom, one bath, 1,000 square feet. My sister made a comment about the mortgage payment was 16 thir, somewhere in there. You can't rent one of my homes for that, just to be fair. Now, I don't set the market. Do I, my wife and I talk about that and we think it's crazy, but that's the market and I'm a fool not to charge it. So in fairness to affordability and, and affordable housing, I mean, I think that's fair for me to share that so you have an understanding that you can't get into a property, three, three bedroom, one bath in London, 1,000 square feet for less than 1,700 bucks. And I'm kind of low, low end of that, to be honest with you. So for whatever that's worth.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. Um, as, as you may know, I'm a realtor. I pulled, I did a search on the MLS this evening for any active listing within the corporation limit of London. There are 16 active listings. Now, these don't count the ones that are under contract, only the active ones. Three of the 16 are under 300,000. One of them's a two-bedroom condo. Um, so there, there really just aren't very many homes in the 200,000 range for buyers to choose. They, the highest price of those 16 is 675,000. And most of us can't afford those. Yes, it is, it is. And then the Dwyer House was the, the very next one at 575, but there's only three under 300,000 and the most expensive one of those is 299,99. So it's barely under that 300,000 mark. So they're just, there's nothing currently available in that price range.
Any other comments? What are council's wishes?
I'd make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
No.
Okay, resolution 180-25 has passed. On to resolution 181-25, again, motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Oh, wait.
Second.
Never mind. Yep, we're good.
Yeah, you're still good. You're still good.
It's the next one that's numbered.
Okay.
Just so you, so you don't-
Right, 181-25 is still-
Yeah, one, we have two 181-25s on the-
Oh, okay.
So again, motion to read by title number.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Resolution 181-25 sponsored by Shannon Traynor, resolution adopting, adopting the recommendations of the planning commission Cypress Church project.
Do we have any other presentation from Cypress Church?
No questions for Cypress?
No.
All right, what are council's wishes?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Definitely yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 181-25 has passed. On for second reading.
182-25 it should be.
Okay, resolution 182-25, again, motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 182-25 sponsored by John Stoll, resolution transferring appropriations. The city needs to pay county for contract services for dispatching.
This is central dispatcher, they want 62,000. And the city needs to pay the county for the contract for the services. We lost one and they, they hired the other lady.
You have any comments on this?
So thi, this is the, the contract for the dispatcher. The money was not transferred earlier, so we're asking it be transferred from the police-
Salary.
Salary.
The dispatch salaries line to is miscellaneous.
So our, our, our bill is due to Madison County for that and this will cover the rest of the year.
Chief Nichols here, if anybody has a question for him.
This is just transferring, uh, li, lines, right? This is not new money or new requests.
Yeah, it's, it's-
Yeah.
From the LPD salaries line, right? To, to the miscellaneous line to pay for this.
What are council's wishes on this? There's not any other questions?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
No.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 181-25 has passed.
That's actually 182-25.
Or 182-25, I'm sorry. I was just reading the paper. On to new business.
Oh.
Resolution 183-25, again, motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 183-25 sponsored by Shannon Traynor, a resolution, resolution authorizing the auditor to increase appropriations and transfer funds.
What was the new amount? Was it 436?
454, but only have the auditors double check my number.
64.
Oh, this is for the police building?
Police.
Got it.
Police building.
Which transfer funds? Can we be more specific and say which funds we're transferring? Don't make me hate. All right.
The, the new amount would be 464,000.
Okay.
464 even? Okay.
So I'll make a motion, we amend it to 464,000?
Second.
From 600,000?
Second.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adopt?
Oh, suspend, I think.
Motion to suspend. I'll make the motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Since I was already there, Rich. I've already seen those words.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Go ahead, Rich.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 183-25 has passed. On to resolution 184-25, again, motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 184-25 sponsored by Andrew Hitt, a resolution authorizing the fire chief to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety.
So this would allow the fire chief to apply and accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety and I believe the amount, next legislation will reference the amount, but the amount is 2,707.74.
Right.
But this is just to apply and accept.
We didn't give him a blanket approval to do that, so just to dot the i's and cross the t's, we're giving him the blanket approval to apply and accept grants.
He's already got the funding, right?
Right.
So there is an emergency measure on this. I move that we suspend the rules.
I will second.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes, sir.
Resolution 184-25 has passed. On to resolution 185-25 sponsored by Andrew Hitt, the resolution increasing appropriations. The fire department has been awarded a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety.
Uh, so this is in reference to the last legislation. It's a grant that's, that was provided in the amount of 2,707.74 and this is just to allow those funds to be used.
This is for maintenance of equipment.
Yes. I'm not sure exactly what specifically or EMS equipment?
Yeah, maintenance of EMS equipment.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes. Motion to adopt?
Second.
Councilman Eads?
Yes, sir.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman?
Yes.
Resolution 185-25 has passed. On to resolution 186-25, again, motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 186-25 sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations. The sanitation department will need to pay rumpkey for trash hauling for the rest of the year.
Right, so at this point, their expenses are up and they think their income's down. They're still doing a research on what the cause of all of this is, but the fund's going to be short, I believe, if I get the number, I'll get the number incorrect, but last year we were at what number? Like 400,000 total for the year last year?
401.
401,000 last year.
We spent 489,000.
Right, but you still have some encumbered money, so we only need, in your mind, we only need the 80,000 to get us through the rest of the year. Right. And there's not an emergency clause, even though she'd like one, there's not an emergency clause on this, so if we want to leave it on, we can.
On to resolution 187-25, again, motion to read by title number.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 187-25 sponsored by Shannon Traynor, a resolution directing the city of London to enter into agreement with the electricity supplier through Aspen Energy Corp. to supply the city of London's electricity aggregation program.
Thank you. Jay, I'm sorry to get a chance to introduce myself beforehand, but thank you for coming. Let me introduce, this is Jay Sell, he's here with Aspen Energy. Aspen Energy is a broker that directs, deals directly with various energy suppliers in order to secure bids for proposed electric-
Thank you, sir.
-electricity supply to its aggregate clients, of which hopefully the municipality of London can be one of those clients. And Jay, when you're ready, I will turn that mic over to you and let you explain a little bit about how we, where, how we got here and where we are.
Thank you, Councilwoman Traynor, appreciate it. My name's Jay Sell, company I represent is Aspen Energy. We're based in Dublin. We were retained by the city to help with an RFP process for your electricity aggregation program. Sent out for RFP information to suppliers back on the 22nd of September. Sent out to multiple suppliers, sent out to Dynegy, the incumbent who, who we work with. We sent out to NOPEC, Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, who works with Nextera. We sent to AEP Energy, Constellation, New Energy and Direct Energy Services. So five of the, of the top players in the aggregation space, two responded and, and put together bids. NOPEC and Dynegy were the formal bidders. Today, we did get pricing from Constellation New Energy as well, but they didn't make the bid in time and the price wasn't competitive. So the results are on the left-hand side. You can clearly see Dynegy is significantly more competitive than NOPEC on the bid. So definitely recommending Dynegy. On the right-hand side, you'll see an update on pricing today. We had a huge market spike this week, earlier this week, and prices are up a little bit, but I still think there's a lot of value there, specifically on the longer term. If you look at the options, the 36-month term under nine cents, to me, is a big winner considering it's below utility rates right now and it's well below the low bid on the market. If you look at the apples-to-apples website that the PUCO puts together and you type in Ohio Edison, you look for fixed rates, 36 months with no monthly fee and no early termination fee, the rates that we were able to secure from Dynegy are four tenths of a penny lower than what you can get if you go out there on your own. So definitely a winner. There's no opt-out fees if anybody wants to opt out at any time they can. So you're providing a long-term, solid fixed rate for folks with a good company that we know, that we've worked with for years. Anytime anybody wants to get out, they can. There is a month or two to be able to, to get out and come back into the program, but there's a revolving door. It's just based on billing cycles of when they leave and when they would be able to come back in. So that, that's pretty much the gist of it. We do assist the city and residents as well personally with questions, so you could always[1669.61] So that's pretty much the gist of it. We do assist the city and residents as well personally with questions, so you could always call the winning supplier if you want about questions about your bill, about the market, about anything. I will also pass out business cards, you can call me personally. I'm happy to take calls from council members, administration, residents, anybody that has any questions at all, I think that'll help folks along the process. It was cool to see you guys get together tonight, I know there's a lot of change going on in the community, and for people to be able to voice concerns and work through it was nice to see, so appreciate that.
Can you tell us where, if we are left without an aggregation program, where the market pricing would be if you were a direct consumer?
So if you go back to Ohio Edison, right now it'd be 9.11 cents per kilowatt hour. So not a ton higher than where you're at on this thing, but we're projecting rates to go up. If you look at the market itself, the two biggest costs of electricity are energy, like the actual generation of energy itself, the second biggest is capacity. Capacity is having enough load generation to be able to feed the market, okay? We don't have enough load right now, so the capacity cost is really, really high right now, and it's driven by data centers and AI, which we have here in this area. You look east of Columbus, there's tons of them, right? So that is driving the price up higher, we see the price increasing over time. I think 8.99 cents is going to be a really good rate for folks as you move forward, rates have just continued to go. And as I work with the communities that I work with, I wish we would have done 36-month deals when we did 12 months, because now they're all coming due and we're looking at nine something, you know, where we could have had folks in at seven something, you know, if we would have done 36 or 48 months. So I think it's a good price, fact that there's no opt-out fees is nice, so folks can go shop on their own if they want. It's with the incumbent, so you guys have worked with Dynegy before, you know, I know them well, they do a good job, and we'll be here to help, so I think it's going to be a good program for you guys.
What do you see the impact on our, the capacity versus the demand, based on all of what we've heard here with all the new houses coming into our community? I know these are just residential users, so they shouldn't be as...
So the capacity is more like our part of the grid PJM issue, so it's a multi-state part of the national grid. Capacity issues for you guys building more and having more folks in town isn't going to affect that capacity cost itself.
Okay.
It might affect transmission and distribution rates over time from the utility, which continue to rise as well, which make these programs even more important. Because the transmission distribution stuff is regulated, you can't affect that at all, you just have to pay it, right? So it really makes these programs more important to be able to save on what you can, that electricity cost of the generation capacity and the other ancillary fees, so.
Okay, and so we have kind of pushed to the end of the line here. Former, or I'm sorry, current resolutions, I guess, regarding using Sopac as a electricity aggregator and adopting their bylaws and joining that sort of community of communities. Can you briefly explain like how this aggregation program would differ from the Sopac proposal?
Yeah, sure, so Sopac is based on sustainability, it's Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council, it's based on green energy, you know, they do some good things in that field. However, it's a group of intergovernmental agency, it's a group of communities together, where you don't really make your own decision on everything. With this, you'd be on your own, you have a substantial load already, so I don't think you need to join other communities to be able to get a good price. As you can see here, the rate is significantly lower than what folks could go get on their own on apples-to-apples today. So I think you're big enough to do it on your own, you'll be able to set your own terms, set your own suppliers, make your own choices on this thing. So I think there's a big value to that, to be able to have that independence of choice, but that's the big difference to me.
And Sopac is, or uses a single supplier, as I thought.
Correct, yeah, and NOPEC, so with Sopac, you're using AEP Energy who refused to bid on this because of the legislation at hand. NOPEC, they use just Nextera, whereas us, we look at, you know, as many of the suppliers as we possibly can on the market.
And we're on, can you explain a little bit about kind of where we are with respect to timeline?
So timeline's super tight, yeah, we definitely pushed it to the very end that we could. Took like, we literally need to get something passed tonight as an emergency. Dynegy agreed to hold the price overnight, so even if the market jumps in the morning, as long as I get them the contract by 10 or 11 o'clock in the morning, we're going to be good to go on this price. Whereas the energy markets are so volatile that you really can't hold a price even overnight anymore, so it's nice that they were doing that. But as far as price and time goes, if you don't do something tonight, folks will go back to the utility, everybody will get a letter notifying them that the program's over, they're going back to the utility rate. You know, with that does come questions, you know, specifically from elderly folks, you know, a lot of times you get a lot of questions about that. We would be happy to help with that process, but it'd be a lot better and a lot easier to have it flow smoothly, get a fresh opt-out letter from the incumbent with a competitive rate and keep the program going. I highly recommend that you do it as an emergency and that you pass it tonight if you guys feel good about the rate and the offering and the term.
And like, can, some of us just don't, our brains don't work in when we're talking fractions of cents very well, so for the average person, if their electricity bill right now, we're on, I know, .0464 cents per kilowatt hour, which is ridiculously low compared to the rates that we're all going to be facing.
Oh, yeah.
But if somebody's looking, if their electricity bill right now is a hundred dollars a month, under .46, or .0464 kilowatts cents per kilowatt hour, what would a rate look like equivalent to that hundred dollar bill? It's about to double, right?
It's significant, yeah, I mean, if you're talking about the generation portion, like not the utility, not the regulated stuff, the transmission and distribution, if you're just talking just supplier charges, yeah, the rates are about going to double.
In choosing not to aggregate, they'll more than double then.
Correct.
Okay, and if the difference is .04 cents per kilowatt hour difference, what does that mean in real, in real dollars?
So it's like half a penny a kilowatt hour, I mean, if you think about it, it's about 12,000 kilowatt hours per year per household, is what it is. So if you can save half a penny a kilowatt hour on that, that's a pretty significant amount, I don't have my calculator handy on me, but yeah, it's a pretty significant amount. And again, there's no opt-out fees, so anytime anybody wants to shop on their own, and maybe they can get a better deal at some point during this term, they can always go do it on their own, but I checked it today, and I know it's significantly lower than the lowest bid with a like term today on apples-to-apples, so that's a winner.
So I believe what we've previously signed was just an agreement basically for you to be able to pull this data, is that correct?
So the agreement that you signed was to enter into contract with us to be your energy consultant?
Yes.
But yes, we haven't entered into a supply agreement.
Right.
So that's what we're talking about tonight, is actually agreeing to the price and the term and the supplier and passing it as an emergency if you deem it to be reasonable to do that, yeah, that's what we're asking for tonight.
And insofar as the contract, this is a contract, there, this is a no cost, there's no cost to the city for our agreement with you.
Correct, it's paid by the supplier, so yes, we do have a fee involved, as far as I know it, it's the lowest in the state for a consultant. So yes, that's paid by the supplier, it's not paid by the city or the residents directly at all.
Just so for council's awareness, we did have some other price comparisons, we chose the one that was the shortest term at the lowest dollar amount, feeling that was of crucial importance to our individual citizenry here. Does anybody have any further questions for Mr. Sell?
Ms. Lester.
You said that it jumped significantly just recently, like how much did it jump say compared to end of July?
So we just saw a jump this last, this week, it jumped 20 cents per decotherm, if you're talking about the natural gas market. So what we watch for power, for electricity, is natural gas, because there's not a national electricity market. So we use the NYMEX, the New York Mercantile Exchange Natural Gas Market as a proxy. So when we say there was a significant jump, not only the prompt month, meaning this next month on the market itself, but the forward strips themselves, the forward months, the futures months, all jumped up a little bit. So we saw prices go from when we got them last Friday, the value on the 12-month, like I was looking at maybe, you know, maybe recommending, to be honest with you, maybe a 12 or an 18-month, because we were looking at a significant difference between the two, because we were at 8.61 cents before on the 12-month. 8.61 per kilowatt hour. Now on the 12-month today, it's 8.78, so it jumped, you know, seventeen hundreds of a cent per kilowatt hour. I think the value today is in the, is in the 36-month, because we were able to hold Dynegy down and actually negotiate with them today, like hey, can you make this happen to get it below nine cents? I think it's the best value out there. So yeah, the market jumped, you know, a reasonable amount this week, however, I feel like the value stayed pretty strong on the 36-month. Again, it sets a nice, solid, long fixed price that's well below where the market's at if people shop today on their own. I think there's a huge benefit to that, having that steady, relatively low competitive fixed price. Anytime anybody wants to shop, they can, and then if they want to get back in the program later, they can.
Maybe somebody else in the administration knows the answer to this, how long, because we're with Dynegy as an aggregator right now, do we know how long of a contract term we agreed to the last time this discussion came up?
It was two or three, we went longer and it didn't go long.
I mean, it was obviously, we...
As you can tell, or whatever, like it was a huge one for us.
Off the top of my head, it was a 36-month term, it could have been longer.
No, I think it was, I think it was three.
Yeah, I think it was at least a three-year term.
But it was kind of a gamble, we talked about that, the tracks was still here, you talked about how it kind of was a gamble with the 36, and I don't agree with that.
Massive one.
Well, I'm just afraid that people are going to have a massive heart attack when they see their, when they see their December 1 utility bills come in, because that's when this rate change will go into effect, is that correct?
I'll be happy to help, so feel free to send folks my way, I've got a stack of cards, and I'm happy to walk people through them, try and educate them on the process, and if they want to switch on their own and go shop, they can, so it's just giving them an option.
Will there be a mailer?
Yeah, there's going to be an opt-out that'll come out, it typically comes out about six weeks prior, so we're going to be going through, if we get the okay tonight, we'll be going through the opt-out letter like next week, in, you know, getting that in front of PUCO. You got to get that to the Public Utilities Commission, we assist with that whole process, and reviewing that with the community and with administration to make sure that it looks good. But yeah, there will be something that comes out, folks will have an opportunity at the beginning, 21 days to opt out if they want to, and then after that initial opt-out period, they can always opt out on their own at no cost as well. But per PUCO rules, they have a 21-day period that they can opt out at the beginning.
So that letter's just for the opt-out, is there going to be, is there any way to explain to the consumers that we were locked in for a time period and this is now the best rate? And, I mean, because it's going to be a big shock to them, right?
Yeah.
And they probably don't really realize that we're about to lose that rate in that contract anyway.
So one thing we can do that we've done with other communities is do, like, put together some sort of marketing, which we can work with you guys on, with administration, whoever wants to be involved in it, where we educate the community on, hey, here's the changes, here's what's happening, here's why it's happening, we can put it on social media, and then you can really do whatever you want with it, if you could put it on like a water bill or something like that on the back of it, you have those sort of options. We're definitely flexible to work with you all on trying to educate the community as much as possible with this, because it is going to be a sticker shock. So yes, we're open to doing, you know, some additional work on that stuff to make sure that people, you know, feel educated about it and feel as good as you can feel heading into this big change.
I just want people to know that we have worked very hard to make sure that their pocketbooks are protected and
Yes.
There's only so much we can do.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, Ms. Traynor, you've worked very hard. You've taken the lead, so thank you for that.
Yes.
So your recommendation would be for the three-year contract?
Yes, I recommend 36 months, 8.99 cents.
What does this resolution actually say? I'm going to have to have a look at it. So this is a, well, first of all, I need to address a little bit here about how we ended up, because this Sopac legislation obviously kind of blew up in our face. So initially, we did have a presentation by somebody that was, I can't remember his name now.
Bill Leffler.
Yeah, Leffler, here from Sopac, that this, the idea of going into a community of aggregators was initially raised in finance committee, it was brought to council, we're here on its eighth reading. And so this proposal to utilize Aspen Energy, who's already solicited and received comparison bids other than Sopac. My first motion is going to be to suspend the requirement that this particular resolution have originated in committee, as we just don't have time for that to happen.
Shannon, can you, I know you have really worked very hard on this, and I feel like you know the ins and outs of both Sopac and Aspen better than the rest of us. And I admit, I am tired, and I still have a very long night ahead of me, but can you give me the quick answer on why we should go with Aspen over Sopac?
Aspen is a broker and Sopac is a supplier, and Sopac is a way more, you can probably answer this better. Sopac is a community of communities, it almost acts like a governing board, with the body being its respective community members. It uses a single energy supplier, which is Ohio Edis.
AEP Ohio.
AEP Ohio.
AEP Energy is their supplier, yeah.
Right, right, and so basically they broker within their community with AEP to supply energy at a aggregated rate. And how they, when you're treating your community as a community of individual households, it's a bigger community, so you have more buying power based on your volume size, right? So you're like, well, if I can buy from you for 10 cents kilowatt hour, but this guy's going to sell it to me for eight cents a kilowatt hour, why can't I just take my community over here, right? And so that's what the aggregators do, is they try, based on our community size, to find us the best deal by selling us as a package, right? So that's why it makes more sense to the aggregator to have a single client, that's the city of London with an opt-out, you pay for that opt-out provision. If we were a company, the company wouldn't have an opt-out provision, therefore they're going to get even lower rates, because they don't have that risk of a consumer backing out at the end. Now, Aspen Energy is a broker, so they're actually paid by the supplier, I mean, the end user ultimately pays their bill, and then a portion of those dollars, cents would go to the broker in order for their services, for helping us find the most competitive energy supplier. And right now, that's Dynegy, which is our current energy supplier, which we were told by Mr. Castle didn't exist anymore. I don't know how that happened, but he was unable to find somebody that, to communicate in order to re-up the same contract that we had with Dynegy previously, was not given to us as an option, and it turns out that it is actually the best one for us now. But insofar as going with Sopac, that's, that's a, it's kind of more than just an aggregator because of that, if you, maybe you weren't here for the presentation, but they do lots of other things, including, you know, grant writing, and I'm sure it's for all their own product, you know? But anyway, it's more of a package deal. And then this is us, you know, kind of out here on our own, not as a community of communities.
And just one other quick thing, we have with another city here in Ohio, gone to NOPEC, Sopac, and Dynegy, and Dynegy beat them on price. Sopac wouldn't participate with us on this, because they were already, you know, they already had active legislation here, so it makes sense why they wouldn't want to, but we've done it before, and they're not always the lowest, even though they have a lot of communities underneath the umbrella, so.
Yes.
You can, you can get just as competitive a price, if not better sometimes, on your own, so that's where we're at here.
Yeah, and that's what, one of the complaints, when I was kind of researching this, is NOPEC is probably three times the size of Sopac. They only use a single supplier, they have a lot more buying power because of their conglomerate of communities, and they could probably strong-arm Nextera into better rates than they do. But again, they're offering more than just utility services, they're offering a whole package of other, you know, community resources, and quite frankly, I don't know that I would turn to my utility to say, help me with an underwriting grant for brokering electricity for a movie theater. I don't know that it would ever occur to me to utilize that, so I just don't know how much we would. To me, it just makes more sense to go straight to the, you know, horse's mouth and just get electricity for as cheap as we possibly can.
Well, I know we've had very extensive discussions on this, Mr. Campana had a lot of questions about Sopac.
Well, and this is not Sopac, this is, Dynegy doesn't use green energy, I think they are, they're probably mostly coal-based or fossil fuel-based.
So Dynegy could do, any of these suppliers could do a green program if you wanted to, but this is just traditional energy. There's always like a mix of green associated with every sort of power, you have renewable energy portion, right? But it's not 100% green program, it's the lowest possible price that you can get with traditional energy, so.
And when Mr. Campana was here, I think a lot of his objection was based on the fact that Sopac is exclusively green energy, unless you opt into the right to use fossil fuels, and their green energy prices are, were quite frankly, a couple of hundreds of cents higher than their fossil fuel energy sources.
Well, and he had concerns about the administrative fees, but you're saying there aren't any that are paid by us as a city or the individual homes? They are paid by Dynegy to you.
Correct, yep, that's correct, and it's in the contract, so it's there, whereas sometimes it's not as out in the open, so.
Okay, so I'm going to renew my motion to suspend the requirement that this have come from committee, based on the history that I think we are all very well aware of, that this has not been here on a surprise issue.
So yes, I'll second that.
Councilman Eads.
Yes.
Councilman McDaniels.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Yes.
Councilman Stahl.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman.
Yes.
I'm going to make a second motion to suspend the three reading rule on this resolution.
Second.
Councilman Eads.
Yep.
Councilman McDaniels.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Traynor.
Yes.
Councilman Stahl.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackman.
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt Resolution 187-25.
Second.
Councilwoman Jackman.
Yes.
Councilman Stahl. Councilman Stahl.
Yes.
Councilwoman Trainor.
Yes.
Councilman Hitt.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman McDaniels.
Yes.
Councilman Eads.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 187-25 has passed. Now on to, back to Ordinance 150-25.
Oh, right.
Five.
So since we've done that, we, since we've done that, we need to move to adopt and then kill it, if that's how you want to go about this.
And it was passed as an emergency, is that correct?
Yes.
I just wanted, okay, great.
So back to Ordinance 150-25, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 150-25, sponsored by Andrew Hitt, and ordinance authorizing the city to enter into the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council Sopac, the execution and delivery of the agreement establishing Sopac and approving the bylaws of Sopac.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilwoman Jackman.
No.
Councilman Stahl.
No.
Councilwoman Trainor.
No.
Councilman Hitt.
No.
Councilman Hayes.
No.
Councilman McDaniels.
No.
Councilman Eads.
No.
Okay, Ordinance 150-25 has failed. On to Ordinance 151-25, sponsored by Andrew, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved. Second.
Almost there, almost there, almost there.
Ordinance 150-25, sponsored by Andrew Hitt, and ordinance approving the plan of operation and governance of the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council Sopac Electric Aggregation Program and for the purpose of jointly establishing and implementing an electric aggregation program.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilman Eads.
No.
Councilman McDaniels.
No.
Councilman Hayes.
No.
Councilman Hitt.
No.
Councilwoman Trainor.
No.
Councilman Stahl.
No.
Councilwoman Jackman.
No.
Okay, Ordinance 151-25 has failed. On to Roundtable. Lisa.
I have nothing.
John.
I don't want to talk too long, we've talked enough tonight. Well, thank everybody for coming up and explaining everything, talking, talking their views. Sometimes you're sitting on your computer, you don't know what you believe. But out of all the people talking, 18 was four, three against, and four was kind of in between, so. Pretty unanimous, I think it'd be a nice addition to the city, thank you.
Shannon.
I don't have any brain left.
I think this is the most people I've ever seen come to council ever, so that is kind of refreshing that the community is interested in what's going on, not just watching online or whatever, but to actually hear and presenting their input as far as the development that is happening over on 142. And I think it's the most positive meeting I've ever heard as well. So that's refreshing also. And the Finance Committee meeting is October 20th, in the meeting room next door at 5:30.
Thank you, Rich.
I'll be quick as I can. I want to thank all of our city employees for doing their jobs really well. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know this is a big issue, and I think we did the right thing. We listened to it, and we went through it. And I think Mr. Gross did the right thing. He's taken the number down, and I think it's great. I think it'll be a great compliment to the city of London. And I'm glad we got the church up across the street from where I live. And I just want to thank all of you guys. You guys did a great job tonight, as you always do. And I just thank the Lord that we got through this tonight with no real big arguments, and everything went pretty good. Did a lot of praying about this one tonight. So thank you, Lord, I appreciate it. That's all, safety meeting, October the 14th, 6 o'clock, next door. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I'm really, really hungry, so I'm done.
Greg.
No, it was, it was a pleasure to see everybody come out and state their opinions. There was a lot of good opinions tonight. Whether or not I agree with all of those didn't matter, but Mr., I'm going to lose your name right now, and I just had, Mr. Markley, I just had it in my mind. I want to thank you for thanking Mr. Saltzman or that position, because that position, I think, is the hardest position in the city of London. And I think that he's doing a great job also.
All right.
Can I say one thing more?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
He talked about the most people at the meeting, but I think back in the late 80s, there's a resolution up to put cats on leashes, and boy, it brought people out, like, it was outside the building.
That always comes up when we have a long...
But it failed, thank goodness.
Okay, get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh my God, I'm so happy to have the utility aggregation off of the agenda. I thought France would come in next. I'm going to have a heater pay increase.
Are you going?
I don't think they meant to say that. He, he probably wants to make, make, make a man...
Bullshit.
Hi, how are you? I'm sorry, I didn't see you out there.
She's been out there practically the whole night.
Really?
I know she walking in.
That, and I'll tell you what, that one light up there kind of hits me right square in the face. And I...
Cleared off a lot on the table.
Sure did. Sure did.
How do you stop the recording now?
Already did.
You already did?
I, I can show you what...
Well, I'd say it's up there, there's no, well? Okay, that's good, that's good. Hey, I'm so sorry, didn't see you out there. No, I'm glad you're down there. Okay, meet his wife. Oh, just Glenn, who was that sitting beside him? That was you? I looked right out there, and I, you got, Dame, Dame recognized you.
We're going to turn off the lights, it's going to be dangerous, but Brett still doesn't. Brett's got as bad as he's gotten himself. Brett gets to turn off the lights. Hey, the mics are still on, man. People are coming. No, that's the, that's the back one, turn that off. Did it go off? No, turn that one off. That's in the back, okay? Keep coming, you got that one, right? Yep. Okay, you already turned that off, you didn't those? Yep. Okay? This one down here. And then you got one more down there. Okay, then you go out the door, all right? Yep. What's that behind the stage song? There's a light on behind the stage. Yeah, there was. Well, I think you turned that one off. Sure.